Welcome, everyone. I know we have a full house tonight and it's almost 7:00. So if you could just make your way in, if you have space next to you and you feel comfortable shifting over, just so people who might be joining us in the next few minutes have a spot they can find to sit. There's plenty of space over here on the left if you want to sneak around the back and scoot in there. Hopefully, everyone is in a position where they can see the screens on either side of us. Those will be where presentation materials will be pulled up if the applicant has them. And we'll get underway in just a moment. I'll give people just a couple more moments to come in and sit down and we'll get underway.
I don't think we have. Melissa, do we have minutes? Do we have the January minutes? I don't remember seeing them. At the end. Is that okay?
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's a little after 7:00. So we are going to get underway. Please feel free to make your way into the room and find a spot that you're comfortable. Welcome to this evening's planning board meeting. It is Wednesday, February 15th, and we are beginning a little after 7:00 this evening. Just for the record to show, we do have a full board this evening. We have Member McCallum, myself, Member Crowe, Member Kent, and Member Grove as our official participating members, and Member Connolly as our alternative member. She will be participating in question asking and stuff, but for votes, it will be the five of us. We do not officially have our first public hearing scheduled to begin until 7:15. So as we customarily do, we will move down into the old new business section of our agenda. And I think just given the overwhelming crowd this evening, we're going to go right to the master plan update. So the master plan steering committee, which myself is the representative member from the planning board on, has been meeting monthly over the last year and a half. We just finished up our visioning effort, which I hope some of you have had a chance to participate in and also to review some of the materials on our website. We will be moving into an implementation phase over the next couple of months. And we do have our next scheduled master plan committee meeting on February 23rd, which is next week. Those are open format meetings. There is a section of public participation, and oftentimes, the crowd is usually kind of small that attends. So usually, people who do attend that are able to participate in the actual meeting in a more meaningful way. And it's really great to hear new voices and ideas for the future of Braintree. And so it's really great to have participation with that. We are going to be working on some upcoming technical sessions related to specific topics in the master plan. Again, those are going to be held at Town Hall middle of March. I'll ask Director Santucci-Razi just to fill in. But those will be, the technical sessions will be open to the public. But are we, do we have all of the members for the sessions already selected? Are you still looking for members to some of the technical sessions?
If I may, through the chair, thank you. We do have a few slots, I believe, open still on the transportation committee. So if anyone's interested, they can email me directly, msantucci@braintreema.gov. The rest of the committees are full. Received a lot of different recommendations from the committee members and then also in consultation with the mayor. I will be sending that out to those people hopefully by the end of the week. Been a little bit busy with a couple other matters here in town over the past couple weeks. And those technical working committees will be on March 15th and March 16th. They are open to the public, but it's really more of a roundtable discussion for those 16 people, but members of the public are willing to sit and witness. But it's not really a public participation type of scenario. So those interested in the strategies and ideas that will be forwarded on to the technical committee should definitely attend the meeting on the 23rd here in Cahill at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So the upcoming technical sessions are aimed at, we had our existing conditions analysis, and then we worked on our visioning. And now we're going to talk about how do we get, how do we get where we want to be? So that's what the technical sessions are going to start to dial into. So as the director mentioned, if there's anybody in the audience who has a special interest in traffic and transportation and wants to be a part of that, please email the director with your interest, and hopefully, we can get you hooked up with participating on that. The next item, I think we will, we do not have meeting minutes, I don't believe, for January yet, so we're going to, we'll table that till next month. We have, is the request for as-built approval, is that? All right. So we'll do request for as-built approval on minor modification, file 83-31, 1010 Washington Street, requested by South Shore Bank. Connor, if you want to go over a summary of where that is, and then we can ask questions.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. On April 12, 2022, the applicant received approval for minor modification from Plan Board Decision 8738 to allow for the reconfiguration of the site's parking and drive-through with a building addition. The applicant, since their approval, have completed the improvements as depicted in the record set of plans. Staff has reviewed the decision, the record plan, the as-built plan, and conducted several site visits for the above referenced application and project. The site appears to be built in conformance with the record plans. All conditions have been satisfied. The applicant has received their certificate of occupancy for this building. At this time, staff is recommending the Plan Board vote for as-built approval with surviving conditions. And those conditions are condition one, condition seven, condition 15, condition 16, and condition 18.
Great. Thank you. I'll ask if any members of the board have any additional comments or questions on the request for as-built approval. Member McCallum, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions.
Member Crowe, do you have any comments or questions? Member Connolly, do you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Member Grove, do you have any comments?
No, no.
Thank you. Member Kent?
Nor do I.
All right. I do not have any further comments as well. So Chair, entertain a motion on request for as-built approval with conditions to remain as noted by staff.
Motion to grant as-built approval with surviving conditions noted by staff in the report.
We have a motion by Member Crowe. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. That is that. We have about five minutes until the next, is that enough time for the ANR? All right. The next item on our old new business is approval not required, an ANR subdivision plan filed for 375 and 381 Granite Street. I don't know if the applicant's here this evening. Good evening, Attorney Johnson. If you just want to give a brief overview of the project.
I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at the staff recommendation. It's rather straightforward. The plan before you for endorsement is a result of a decision by the Zoning Board of Appeals that was decided in last July. Essentially, what is created on Granite Street, there are now three house lots on there, 385, 381, and 375. 375, there was a large fire, if you remember, on Granite Street, in which the home formerly of George Ross was totally destroyed by fire. This is a reorganization of the lots. It creates out of the lots 381 and 375. Three lots, two conform with, one which received a minor variance for lot size. The other one, 381, is 25,005 feet, and the Residence B, excuse me, on the lot C, I believe, that's owned, Residence B is 15,500 square feet. They all have adequate frontage. They're now access where there was a common driveway that serviced all three lots. This has been a reorganization of that and also a reorganization of all the new utilities that will serve the lot coming in. There are two common driveways, which will be for the board as well as a grading permit that will be required for the site. So this is somewhat of a ministerial action in that it, all of them have adequate frontage on the public way, which is Grand Street, State Highway.
Great. Thank you. Does staff have anything to add, commentary, or any additional information?
Not at this time, no.
No? Board comments and questions? Member McCallum, any comments or questions?
No questions.
Member Crowe, any comments or questions?
None, thank you.
Member Connolly, any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Member Grove, any comments?
Yes, ma'am. Attorney Johnson, is there's one lot that's nonconforming?
No, it's no longer, it's deemed conforming now because it had a slight variance for lot size. Just as part of history, the Granite Park area was formed when the lot size was 20,000 square feet. All the surrounding lots, we did a survey, actually, of 300, 900 feet in circular area. This is directly across from approximately where the Fidelity Building used to be, at the Sultura Plaza. And all of the 80, I think it was 83% to 85% of the lots there were 20,000 and change, and this mirrored that. We were also able to solve a few problems by doing that, and the Zoning Board of Appeals voted it, and it's deemed to be a conforming lot size now. Thank you.
Member Kent, any comments or questions?
No questions.
I don't have any further comments. So we'd be looking for a motion to move forward the ANR subdivision plan.
Motion to endorse plan as approval not required.
We have a motion by Member Crowe. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Is that a full one?
Member Grove, did you, okay. Thank you for the clarification. So momentarily, we are going to get underway with the public hearing section of our meeting. I'm hopeful that many of you were able to pick up an agenda at the door. We did, just for those who may be unfamiliar with the format of our, of our public hearings or wondering when something is going to be heard, or how much longer it's going to be, or what's, what's going on, we wanted to outline just a general expectation of the process this evening. The public hearing format and procedures that's found on the Biaka, the agenda, will actually be the general format that will follow for all of the public hearings this evening, unless, of course, there's less public comment than required for the timeframe we had outlined. So essentially, once we open the hearing, there'll be a brief presentation by the applicant, followed by public comment, then staff comment and board comment. I do have a couple just items to try to help limit distraction for both the board members and also for BCAM broadcasting. We clearly have a very large crowd here tonight, and I do want everyone who wants to make comments or ask questions to be able to be heard and understood. And in the past, sometimes when there's disruptions in the meeting, we get distracted. When there's clapping, we can't really understand, you know, what, what is going on or what the sentiment is for. So we're asking just one speaker at a time, please. You do have to come to the podium because this is being video recorded, and also, the meeting minutes do need to reflect your name and address. So if you could just come up to the podium and state your name and address before providing your comment. And then all comments will be directed through the chair, just so that, again, we can keep track. BCAM has cameras all around the room, and they will be changing for the viewer which camera they're playing. So just to try to keep that straightforward. Clapping, yelling, again, very distracting. What I am asking, though, because I know there are a lot of speakers here, and we are kind of limited with our agenda and the time this evening, if a speaker comes forward and you feel like you really want to elevate what they're saying, and you very much agree, and you want to also say that, just put your hand in the air. For us as a board, we are going to be able to understand how many people feel that way. That's very, that's a better tool for us to understand the sentiment of the crowd than clapping and yelling. And we really want to hear. This is the first official public hearing for this. I know there's been some neighborhood meetings, and there's been information coming out, but this is the first time we're hearing this, and we're all hearing this in a formal setting. And we want, we want people's commentary to be taken seriously and considered, and I think to give you all the best chance for that. Again, please come up to the podium one at a time. If someone is saying all the stuff you want to say, put your hand up the whole time. And then, you know, you don't have to necessarily come up and say it yourself. Someone else with different ideas, other things to consider can also come up. So just, just a, just a point of, hopefully, that helps us with the discussion this evening. And again, just because acoustics in this room are, are kind of challenging, if you could, you know, try to keep phone conversations or sidebar conversations to a minimum because it is distracting the speakers and to the board as well. Again, we just want to make sure that we're hearing the conversation as, as much as we can. So, and again, public speaking at the podium, I guess, is not for everyone. We have gotten an immense number of letters to the board that we are able to read, that goes on the official record. So if for some reason this evening you aren't able to say what you wanted to say, or you felt like you, you know, didn't, you wanted to go up, but you didn't get a chance to, send it to us via email, you can send it to Director Santucci-Razi. She makes sure to distribute that to us. So we will see it. You know, our intent tonight is to hear about the project and to hear from the public and to start this conversation in a meaningful way, and hopefully, in a positive way wherever it goes beyond tonight. So with that, the first item on our agenda is actually the Jensen Farm Road and portion of 75 Harness Lane, PB File 23-02. This is for a grading permit, and I believe the applicant is here this evening for this. So if you want to set up for a moment, and then you can get underway with just a brief description of the project.
My name is Chi Man, civil engineer. I'm red card on these projects. Jensen Farm Road, the project was actually...
We need to open the public hearing. Sorry. Sorry. That's okay. We just need to read into the record the notice of public hearing for this new hearing,
Notice is given by the planning board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, and the Braintree zoning by law, Chapter 135, Articles 5, 11, and 12, that a public hearing will be conducted on Wednesday, February 15th, at 7:15 PM in the Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider a grading permit application filed by Dennis Oliveria, ADP Holdings LLC. The applicant's project involves disturbing approximately 11,500 square feet for grading associated with the driveway, dwelling, and pool installation. The property is located at Jensen Farm Road and a portion of 75 Harness Lane, shown on a new lot ANR plan endorsed in January of 2022, which is 68,055 square feet. Zoned Residence B and is shown on Braintree Assessor's Map 1083 as plot 22 and a portion of 9M.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Man.
Yes. As the notice indicate, the lot was, we subdivided sometime a year ago. Carry this. Used to be a smaller lot, and then it was, a portion of the lot was subdivided by 75 Harness Lane, and the two lot combined create the bigger lot. The project itself is primarily on the northern portion of the site where we are proposing a single, single family dwellings. The project itself was, the project itself was filed with the conservation commissions probably a year ago, and it was approved. And at this time, we are going back to the conservations. We filed another note of intent, just because the building is slightly larger, and the commissions feel that they want to take a second look at the project, the impact, and so forth. But the late, the access from the road, the building is access from Jensen Farm Road is going to be a driveway coming through, is going to be a wetland crossing. The wetland crossing is pretty much the same design as a year ago that was approved. Very small crossing that we are going to have a concrete covert to get through the crossing with retaining wall on both side. And then opposing the building site is going to be some grading activities to bring the site up to the proposed finished floor grade. At the finished floor elevation is pretty close to the existing grades around that area. We tried to balance the site pretty much. Our calculations show about 12 cubic yards of field material coming to the site, and that's going to be primarily structural field for the covert sub base and the building It is going to be some tree cuttings involved, and we are proposing some tree replications. Also, the wetland crossing, we are going to have wetland replication as well. The layout of the, the wetland impact area and the replication area is exactly the same as it was approved a year ago by the conservation commissions. We have received staff report, actually, this morning from the staff, and I'm not sure if you have a chance to review them, but we actually work diligently today. We met with the staff this morning and submit a response letter to address every single item on the comments. And we have revised the plan set. This is actually the revised plan, and submit a copy to the, to the board. Open for any questions?
Okay. Great. And just a reminder, this is a public hearing, so if there is anybody from the public who has any questions or specific commentary on this application, it is, it is, it is the time for you to be able to come up and ask that. If anybody wants to come up, you know, feel free to make your way up. In the meantime, we'll start to take comment from the board and staff. Director Santucci-Razi, do you have any commentary on the staff report or any follow-up?
Just quickly, Madam Chair, I did meet with she this morning. I've been working with Dennis for a little while, you know, kind of going over the plans. We had some brief comments. Those have been addressed, and they have also been addressed on the revised plans. Planning staff has draft conditions prepared, and if the board is comfortable, the staff is comfortable with moving forward this evening.
Great. Thank you. Member McCallum, do you have any comments or questions?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Man, I'm just curious, why didn't you pull the house more forward towards, towards the road?
Well, actually, the house is relatively the same, but the orientation is different. It's now facing, I can show you. Now, the garage is facing directly to the driveway, and it's coming in, it can drive right in. We have a little hammerhead for the car to turn around and get back out. The layout that was approved a year ago was more tilted in an angle. Any impact area within the buffer zone is relatively the same, except we have a little grading down here where the driveway, we're meeting the retaining wall, we have to pick the, we have to pick the road up slightly higher than the design a year ago, just to provide utility corridor between the finished road and the covert to have enough soil to have to bury all the utilities. And then most of the impact area, or I should say, additional grading area would be beyond the 100-foot buffer zone, which is upland. Compared to the site area, the development area is actually a pretty small percentage.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
I just want to point out that we try to minimize any stormwater impact, although most of the impact are going to be draining into onsite wetland system. We have designed the roof runoff capture system to capture the roof runoff into dry wells for onsite invitations. And also, besides the roadway itself, all the pay heavy in front of the garage and any other walkway on the pool deck is going to be permeable pavers. We try to minimize any runoff onsite.
Okay. Thank you. And the culvert, is that going to have, you're going to build something over the culvert so you can travel over it?
Exactly. It's a precast box culvert, so we are going to put on top of the wetland crossing so we can lay a utility on top of it.
Okay. And you won't have any flood impacts if you get a lot of rain?
That is more like, actually, a small, it act like a small drainage ditch over there. So we have enough, I should say, kerens below the covert for the, for the natural water to get by. And again, it's pretty much the same design that was approved by the conservation commissions like a year ago.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Member Crowe, do you have any comments or questions?
No question, just two comments. First, appreciate the hard work getting the revised materials in, so we were all teed up for tonight. And just a second comment, which relates to some of the grading permit aspects from before, that if the planning department and the building department is satisfied that there's no off-site grading impacts, and particularly in situations here where there's a conservation oversight also, I would like to revisit, taking a look at the grading provision at some point to try to limit the cost for the homeowners on residential, residential projects that trigger that grading requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Crowe. Member Connolly, do you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Member Grove, do you have any comments or questions?
No, Madam Chair.
Member Kent, do you have any comments or questions?
Just any comments from abudders or neighbors or any feedback?
No, we haven't received any comments. Other were comments from engineering department, and Mr. Man has addressed those in the revised materials. There's been a lot of, this section of the subdivision at Jensen Farm, most of the people have gone to conservation because of the wetland areas, so they're probably kind of used to what's going on over there, and they're supporting each other. The shape of the wetland there and the 25-foot no disturb, there has been, I would say, maybe every month for a while, someone on the conservation commission agenda just trying to, you know, get as much usable area and yard and balancing sort of the impact, or making sure there is no impact, I should say, to the wetland areas. So this whole section, I can't, how many, how many files? Multiple ones? Yeah. Have, have gone through, not as much grading, nothing, the other ones haven't triggered grading permits, but alteration and having to go to the conservation commission.
And we, we have met with the conservations on the public hearing. There was no neighbor show, and there was, all the neighbor was notified by certified mail.
All right. Member Kent, thank you. Just in reviewing the draft conditions, if I could ask staff, is there a condition that speaks to permanent monumentation on, on the property? I'm, I'm thinking just in long lines of a past conversation we had at the last meeting of just establishing monumentation at the street line?
There is not, because the ANR was endorsed and voted to, that was about a year ago with this board.
Is it possible for us to, as part of the grading permit, have them set monumentation at the street line?
Um, I don't think that would be an issue. I would actually, I think we should add that as a condition, and then I can verify that there might be some that was associated with the subdivision. This is still an open subdivision. The subdivision was permitted by Messina almost 25 years ago, and they still have not completed it and finished it. But they have started that closeout process. I have that as-built plan in my possession now. I have not had a chance. There very well could be monumentation in this area. If it is, great. If it is, great. If not, it can be, it can be added.
Okay. Was this lot part of the original subdivision?
The front section was, so there was a very small, I would say the part that comes up that's skinny and then the triangle that goes off to the left that she has sort of highlighted, I guess I would describe it as the eastern section of the lot, if I get my bearings correct?
Yep.
And then
This part
Yeah.
Of the lot came from 75 harness.
Yeah. And then half a 75 harness was to make this lot.
Okay. I think just in the interest of maintaining monumentation on our right of way, I would like to have that be added. Is there any existing monumentation at the lot corners on Jensen?
Well, the plan here show iron rod on the next lot over, the two lot corner.
But not on our lot?
But not this lot.
Okay.
I think we will be agreed to establish monumentation for this lot corner.
Thank you.
We'll need the surveyor to go out and stick the building anyway.
Okay, great, thank you. So if we could add that condition, that was my only comment. I don't have anything further. And you have had a chance to review the draft conditions this evening. You don't have any issues with any other draft conditions?
No, we stand.
Okay, great. So is there anybody from the public who would like to ask any comments or questions with regards to this application? All right, not seeing any, we can have, do you need a motion to close the public hearing?
We do have a correspondence list as well, Madam Chair. Items through today.
All right, so a motion to accept into record the correspondence through February 15th?
So move.
Motion by Member Kent, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Grove, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Motion by Member Kent, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Grove, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, so now a motion on the application, if anybody would like to move, one.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion for positive approval. Grading permit file 135-1201, actually, planning board filed 2302, Jensen Farm Road and a portion of 75 Harness Lane.
We have a motion by Member McComme, do we have a second?
The conditions?
We will, we will add with the conditions discussed. We have a motion, do we have a second? Member Grove will second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, great, thank you very much. Just for those of you who might be in the hall, there's lots of seats over here if you want to make your way in, but if you want to be in the hall too, that's understandable. The next item on our agenda this evening is town council order 23-004, which is residences on Granite, the RG PUD, section 135-612 zoning map and zoning ordinance text amendment for the creation of a PUD, which is a planned unit development district. This is on a portion of 250 Granite Street, 135 Lakeside Drive, 131 Lakeside Drive and assessors parcel 2039-0-56, street layouts of Bonneview Road, Silver Road and portions of Lakeside Drive. This evening, we do have the applicant here to present for us and I will let them introduce themselves momentarily. We will need to read into record the public notice before we get underway. And so just staff will read that in and then please introduce yourself and begin your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Notice is given by the planning board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 5 and 11, and the Braintree zoning ordinance, Chapter 135, Article 6 and 15, that a public hearing will be conducted on Wednesday, February 15, 2023, at 7:15 PM in Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will provide a recommendation to the town council on order 23-004, sponsored by the property owners Braintree Property Associates Limited Partnership, SSP 131 Lakeside LLC, SSP 135 Lakeside LLC. Pursuant to Section 135 612, zoning map and zoning ordinance text amendments are proposed for the creation of a PUD district known as residences on Granite. The land to be rezoned into the PUD district is a portion of 250 Granite Street, shown on map 2089 is plot 22, 135 Lakeside Drive, shown on map 2039 is plot 17, 131 Lakeside Drive, shown on map 2039 is plot 6, and the street layouts of Bonneview, Bonneview Road, Silver Road and portions of Lakeside Drive. The area to be zoned into PUD district is currently zoned highway business and residence B.
Thank you very much. Attorney Marinelli, if you want to begin your presentation and introduce the applicant and the project or the district.
Good evening, Chair Patterson Joyce and members of the planning board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Frank Marinelli, for the record. I'm a longtime resident of Braintree with my law office located at 439 Washington Street North Braintree for the past 27 years. I represent ZOM Living in their application to create the residences on Granite Planned Unit Development District and for the residents, residents to be constructed in that district. A $200 million investment in Braintree that transforms an otherwise unusable 8.7 acres at the rear of the mall property into 180 high-quality senior living residences in one building and 315 high-quality multifamily residences in a second building. With me is Jim Dunlop and Jim is the managing director of ZOM Living. And also here is Jeff Dirk, who is the managing partner of BAI. They are the project transportation engineers and planners. ZOM Living by way of background has constructed over 30,000 high-quality apartments nationwide in major markets, over $5 billion in development. At the proposed residences on Granite, many of the units in two aesthetically designed buildings will have balconies and water views of the former Quincy reservoir. Both the senior and multifamily buildings have a fitness center, indoor and outdoor amenities that include a swimming pool, barbecue areas, 33% open space, a publicly accessible walking trail and thousands of plantings. The multifamily building is to the west, closest to Nordstrom, and the senior living building is to the east of that. The site is significantly lower than Granite Street, directly west of the site, and the five-story height, we believe is appropriate, given the much lower topography of the site. ZOM Living provides 10% of all units as affordable, available to workers whose earnings are capped at 80% of the average median income. The 10% affordable keeps pace with state law. There were three entry-exit drives to and from Granite Street, to and from the ZOM Living site. South Shore Plaza, as we all know, is a regional shopping center located in our town since 1961, 1.6 million square feet with over 200 retailers. The plaza is Braintree's largest taxpayer. Residential housing built next to large brick-and-mortar retail like South Shore Plaza is happening nationwide. Housing creates great synergy with retail due to its built-in consumer base. Retail, which is challenged by online purchasing, is elevated and sustained by housing. The addition of housing is the catalyst to further improvement at a retail center. Simon, owner of the South Shore Plaza, submitted a letter stating that ZOM's residences on Granite can serve as a catalyst for future investment and development opportunities. I was on, I was zoning and permit counsel for the Hanover Crossing development. That $250 million redevelopment was transformative and is embraced by the town of Hanover. Approval of the housing was the catalyst to retail improvement and redevelopment. Without approval of the high-quality multifamily housing at Hanover Crossing, the other improvements would not have followed. People living next to retail at Hanover Crossing are what attracted market basket and many new businesses and restaurants. At South Shore Plaza, ZOM's residential brings a consumer and employee base that can attract life science or other use to empty Lord and Taylor or Hayman Etts on Wood Road, which is still not occupied with a scent. Currently, there's no place for a younger employee base to live, work and recreate. ZOM Residential will bring new business, retail and restaurants to the surrounding commercial area, creating immense economic benefits. Over the past year, Jim Dunlap and his company have engaged experts, architects, engineers and conducted due diligence with town officials and submitted detailed design plans at great expense over the past year for the residences on Granite. ZOM has had eight or more meetings with the planning department. ZOM filed plans for creation of the planned unit development, the PUD, on January 3rd with the town council. We first received the planning board staff report late Monday afternoon, a day or two ago, and hardly enough time for ZOM to consider and respond, but we will be doing so. Jim Dunlop, ZOM and the entire team have been open and transparent throughout the past year and will consider the staff report and public commentary concerning density and other concerns that ZOM intends to address in the upcoming weeks. ZOM, a premier developer of multifamily housing, continues to seek dialogue to create direly needed multifamily housing in Braintree. There really are three overarching realities that make ZOM's proposal or any modified proposal for housing important to Braintree. First, the ZOM residents as proposed provide reliable, much-needed real estate tax revenue to Braintree, over 1.4 million in gross revenue, 790,000 net each year in support of schools and municipal services. Economic impact is a special permit consideration. The town auditor reported to the town council in May that Braintree's growth and revenue are not keeping pace with municipal costs. It's going in the opposite direction in Braintree. There's inadequate new revenue to keep pace. ZOM's high-quality residences provide net $790,000 revenue each year to the town, plus $3 to $4 million in building permit fees and utility connection fees before construction even begins. Those are the findings in the filed economic report of Fager Planning. There's a lack of new revenue. We see it with teachers who were picketing last week due to cuts and lack of funds. And so Lord and Taylor remains vacant, life science hasn't moved in, Hayman Etts is vacant, there's no nearby housing, there's no live-work-play venue for younger workers in Braintree or for empty nesters who want to sell their home and stay in Braintree. ZOM's new residences at South Shore Plaza are ideal and they help on many fronts: revenue, housing, direly needed housing, alternatives to single-family homes, economic development. In 2022, based largely on economics, speculated revenue, Braintree leadership took extraordinary rezoning action, approving marijuana production and distribution in the highway business zone by special permit. If you get a special permit, you can put marijuana production and distribution in the highway business district, some of our town's most valuable properties. The speculated marijuana revenue has not materialized and may, may never materialize. Braintree changed its zoning for that speculative venture primarily based on economics projected revenue, which hasn't come. Conversely, high-quality multifamily housing, ZOM's beautiful residences at the plaza represent millions in reliable, conventional net tax revenue and fees to the town of Braintree to support and pay for schools, fire, police and municipal services. Housing and economic development go hand in hand. Many young people cannot afford the entry price or the expenses of a single-family home in Braintree. Not everyone wants a single-family home as opposed to living in a high-quality apartment with direct connection to over 200 retailers, shopping and dining at South Shore Plaza. There, there needs to be an ongoing dialogue. Braintree does not have adequate housing choices, housing alternatives or housing diversity. And ZOM is working diligently and transparently in good faith. The South Shore Plaza is unique. Planned unit development is, is a zoning process which is authorized by the State Zoning Act, Chapter 48, Section 9, and also under our ordinances, Section 12, 612. It is a zoning that allows transfer, transformation of an otherwise desolate nine acres into a $200 million residential development or some modification of it at this location and it's done by first, a vote of the town council to create the residences on Granite PUD district per an acceptable concept plan, all of which we filed and worked on over the past year. And then, secondly, by special permit of the planning board approving the proposed development. Even the staff report that we got Monday afternoon, page 8, acknowledges that the 8.7 acres is underutilized, a very, a very rarely-used surplus parking area. The two old dwellings are secluded and the area, quote, "has become attractive to homeless people setting up camps as well," end quote. An obstruction narrative to multifamily housing, which implied that a PUD like this is coming to your neighborhood, is inaccurate. This particular PUD quite clearly is unique to the plaza land in question. A regional shopping center does not exist anywhere else in Braintree. Braintree's single-family neighborhoods are mature and built-out, located in mature and built-out neighborhoods and will remain single-family homes in built-out, mature single-family neighborhoods. Just look at the number of Braintree single-family home improvement building permits and projects. Single-family homes and neighborhoods in Braintree continue to be single-family neighborhoods. This acreage at the plaza, conversely, is unique and is currently part of the regional shopping mall. It's very valuable, completely underutilized and is appropriate for direly needed multifamily housing, serving all generations in Braintree. The closest house on Lakeside Drive is almost two football fields away, 568 feet away from the west end of the Lakeside dead end and even, even further from the closest ZOM building, which is the senior living building. As shown on the detailed filed plans and landscape plans, ZOM Living fortifies the separation from Lakeside. The Lakeside turnaround is separated from ZOM Residential by installation of a high berm with green giant abovites on top. ZOM Residence is part of the commercial South Shore Plaza venue, completely separated with vegetated berm from a, from a budding town property, Flaherty School and Lakeside Neighborhood beyond. Even the staff report, page 5, states, quote, "No access to any portion of the residential use will be off of Lakeside Drive," end quote. The abutters and abutters to abutters within 300 feet, what the law defines as parties and interests are the plaza itself, DCR with the dam and the town's Flaherty School property. ZOM is in fact fortifying the non-access to and from Lakeside by proposing to eliminate Lakeside Drive altogether west of the turnaround and transform that area into a publicly accessible walking trail, which is shown on our plans, parallel to the dam. And as stated again in the staff report, no access to any portion of the residential use will be off of Lakeside Drive, end quote. Future crime was speculated when, in fact, people living in a high-quality residential development will have the opposite effect. They will augment public safety and security. The senior living building and the multifamily building are five stories and are appropriate because the site at the rear of the mall property is over 25 feet lower than Granite Street, directly west of the site. Granite Street is at elevation 112 at the plaza entry west of the site. The first floor elevation of ZOM Living, shown on the engineered site plans that have been submitted, is 84 to 85 and a half, 26 to 28 feet lower. Therefore, the two ZOM buildings are approximately 35 feet above that Granite Street elevation at that point, which is really 35 feet is the height that's allowed for a single-family dwelling under our bylaws. A completely inapplicable 10-story Quincy building was exhibited by opponents at a meeting. ZOM and the ordinances made clear that any approval is tied to the plans, which show five five stories, unmistakably five stories. So exhibiting a 10-story building in Quincy is misleading as concerns the five-story commitment and proposal. In addition to new revenue, the second overarching need is the need for senior and multifamily housing in Braintree. Braintree seniors who want to sell a home and stay in Braintree have minimal options, as do younger workers who either can't afford to buy a home or prefer apartment living. Under Section 3A of the State Zoning Act, Braintree is an MBTA community. 25% of its housing units should be multifamily. Braintree has approximately 15,077 housing units, but does not have the required 3,769 multifamily residences, at least not built. In 2022, addressing the Zoning Act Amendment, Section 3A, mandating a by-right multifamily district, the Mass Secretary of Housing and Economic Development stated that we're in a housing crisis, which is consistent with the Housing 2030 Report that says that the South Shore needs over 40,000 new housing units by 2030 to remain economically competitive as a region. Those are the studies. Braintree is critical to the South Shore economy. Multifamily housing for Braintree is critical because Braintree seeks to attract life science and keep existing businesses, excuse me, that are critical to Braintree's tax base. The need for multifamily housing must be referenced in any master plan with particular reference to the opportunity for multifamily housing at South Shore Plaza. To not do so is to ignore the planning fact that multifamily housing next to large retail centers is being done nationwide. A master plan that ignores the need for multifamily housing for Braintree residences of all ages would have little, if any, credibility.
Attorney-elect.
When the legislature...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Just in the sake of time and the rest of our agenda, we did have you scheduled for 15 minutes of presentation, and staff was just trying to track that, so I don't know if you have a lot more presentation.
I didn't know that. Well, I mean, it's a significant project. I have, yeah, just a few more minutes.
I just wanted, I had put that, we had kind of tried to set that up, so I don't, I didn't want to interrupt you or cut you short, but I just, in the event of respecting people's time for how, when they're anticipating things, carry on, but I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay. I guess it's unfortunate. Anyway, the residents on Granite reflect what is happening nationwide. Multifamily residences built next to large brick-and-mortar retail centers. Retail centers with adjacent multifamily housing include Legacy Place, Stedham, University Avenue, Westwood, Natick Mall, Kingston Collection, and Hanover Crossing. High-quality multifamily residences adjacent to retail centers help sustain existing businesses and attract new ones. Concerning the planned unit development process, first of all, planned unit development, as stated, is authorized by the Zoning Act in Section 612, and the purposes are pointed out there to provide greater flexibility for the development of large tracts of land. We believe that all of the purposes of the PUD have been met under the Braintree zoning ordinances. Greater variety and flexibility in the development of housing types, housing units available to moderate-income residents who might otherwise have difficulty finding homes, promote the permanent preservation of open space. ZOM has 33% permanently committed open space. Facilitate the construction and maintenance of streets, utilities, and public services in a more economical and efficient manner. The bus stop to Quincy Red Line and Hope or commuter rail is a three-minute walk. ZOM residents pay for their own maintenance of pavement, drives, landscaping, and trash and snow removal. There are no town services in that regard. Contrary to some of what's been written, the staff report, Page 8, there is no requirement that the residential and commercial be owned by one party on one lot. In fact, Section 612A references that the PUD may contain both individual building sites and common property. Residential and commercial real estate are different businesses, and that's why the owner of a commercial shopping center like Simon often brings in an experienced, reputable, national residential developer like ZOM to build residential. So that is nothing unusual. It doesn't have to be the same owner or development, and in fact, that's not the way the industry works. And at Hanover Crossing, the residential was built and owned by Hanover Company of Houston, Texas. The commercial at Hanover Crossing was built and is owned by Prep of Cincinnati. The 8.7 acres has split zone, which makes it infeasible for development. It has residents being in highway business almost 50/50. There's no prospect for building a store in the small highway business-built area. No one would patronize such a remote store. The two houses on the land are obsolete, each 60 to 80 years old. The ideally situated acreage next to the mall is underutilized. The site concept plan is also a requirement of Section 612, the PUD. The application has to contain a site concept plan, which we have done in great detail. Again, the process should be one of dialogue with the town and its departments, not exclusion or obstruction. ZOM is ready, willing, and able to work with every town department to help the town meet its multifamily obligation to Braintree residents, including the state 10% affordability requirement. And we're willing to examine with experts infrastructure like the parking, like the pumping station. So that is the process. If the Town Council approves the residences on Granite, then under Section 612B of the zoning ordinances, the Planning Board can grant a special permit for the construction of a PUD. Under Section 102, ZOM has properly provided the residential and open space uses. The proposal is directly adjacent to commercial, so the required uses of residential and open space are appropriate, and they're specifically, the residential is the senior multi-unit buildings, and the publicly accessible walking trail includes the open space. And there's nothing that prevents that. The uses required by the PUD are provided. It was recently implied that a gas station or billboard could go on the ZOM site. Look at the detailed concept plans. Do you see a gas station or billboard? Of course not. It's a high-end, $200 million residential development with 33% open space and thousands of plantings, and there are vast amenities. Clearly, the Planning Board is not going to issue a special permit for a development that is materially different from the concept plan relied upon by the Town Council. That's the transparent, good-faith, open dialogue world that ZOM lives on, lives in, and that's what we've done. We filed the plans. They are the same plans with further details that would be submitted to the Planning Board. There's been the use of the term exemptions. This isn't about variances at all. This is openly and transparently a zoning change, a planned unit development to create needed multifamily housing for Braintree at an underutilized site with a carefully drafted PUD tied to the filed plan or any modification of it. Opponents have contended that the PUD ordinance, Section 612, was not completed in 1991 when Town Meeting adopted it. Apparently, Town Meeting didn't agree. Town Meeting approved it. PUD is a state law and zoning bylaw ordinance under Section 612. There's been speculation about crime, new people in ZOM's multifamily or senior building being able to see playing fields hundreds of feet away. Those new people, new residents, actually want to come home and enjoy their highly amenitized apartment homes. They have a vigilant interest in the safety and security of the area. There was also speculation about the amount of vehicle trips. Jeff Dirk is here, and the traffic, the traffic report is on file. The traffic report's conclusions are that the project is accommodated within the existing road infrastructure and the road network with no issue, and there are actually timing and signalization improvements that can be accomplished. There's been speculation about school capacity, when in fact, enrollment at Flaherty School has decreased by over 20%, and school-aged children from ZOM can be accommodated. An opponent claimed 27 school-aged children, almost 30% more than the 21 students that are documented in the economic report. So those are the facts, and the economic report contains all of that. Braintree needs new growth, new revenue, new housing diversity for its residents, and ZOM is a national developer at an ideal site for Braintree. You know, we've heard some of the comments that the mall is in trouble. The mall has national tenants. The mall has Apple. I've been a lifelong resident of the community, and I don't, certainly, we go to Chipotle, Nordstrom Cafe, Lids, Macy's, Apple, Davios, anywhere else in the mall. I think Milton's would tell you that they had one of their best years ever. So the rhetoric that there's a dead mall is not helpful. I know a dead mall. It was the Hanover Mall, vacant throughout. That was a much different circumstance concerning sustainability. Again, allowing housing was the catalyst to improvements, and housing should be allowed here as the path to potential further improvements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do apologize for the time limit, but just in the interest of getting, giving everyone a chance to comment on what's on our agenda this evening, I do appreciate you accommodating that. So we are going to move into the public comment section of our meeting. This is going to be a time for the public to come up and make comment or ask questions. We're going to take about an hour of public comment, so around 9 o'clock, we're going to wrap up public comment. I understand that we might not get to everyone, and there might be more public comment to be had, so we'll talk about the process for further public comment at the end of the public comment period this evening. We're going to try to limit speakers to two minutes. I don't want to have to be too tough on that, so, you know, we'll keep a general eye on the two minutes. Assistant Director Murphy's going to help me with that. So if you get a little wave from me, just try to button up your comment. And again, you can submit it in writing to us. We will be able to read it. It will go into the public record, so hopefully everyone will feel like they get a chance to comment this evening. And again, if we could try to keep sidebar conversations and disruptions minimized as the speaker is moving forward. If people want to start making their way up to make comment, maybe just stand off to the side, that would be fine, too. And again, if you want to elevate the words of a speaker and you don't want to feel comfortable speaking on your own, just raise your hand, because we will be able to see what the commentary and how it's resonating with our residents. So again, thanks, and please feel free to come up with your comments as you have them.
My name is Kelly Moore, 46 Hollis Ave. To the members of the Braintree Planning Board, on behalf of the North Braintree Civic Association, MBCA, I rise in opposition to ZOM Living's proposed project, RG-PUD. Not only does the MBCA oppose this project in its current form of 495 units, we oppose it in any form other than what zoning would allow, which would be anywhere between 40 and 72 units. We will not accept any other compromises. It is interesting to hear from those who seem to approve of this project. Initially, they were for it. Now they're against it in its current form. So if it went to 494, we'd be good. The only appropriate form is 65 units. The MBCA has been described by our critics as a small group of people who just say no. We've been called liars, obstructionists, and fearmongers, even tonight. We are simply residents who are concerned about protecting the town from large developments like ZOM's RG-PUD. We are simply telling the truth. According to Peter Foreman, the president of the South Braintree Chamber, or South Shore Chamber, Braintree has a particularly vocal group of people who have found a lot of passion in blaming any problem they see with the town on the fact that there has been housing built in the last 10 years and that there are now new people living in this housing, and they want to stop that. That's a quote. He went on to make inaccurate statements about the status of Braintree's safe harbor-affording housing status. Additionally, we were pointed out in today's Boston Globe, there's an article about us, a citizen group, asking, "Can we turn down the volume of their, the foe's, voices?" Meaning, can the voices of those who oppose the project be silenced? The answer is a resounding no. It went on to suggest that these vocal residents who do not represent the voice of the town, quote, "Opponents of housing are often labeled this way, but rarely is this accompanied by a survey data or a clear indication that this is a representative voice of a community's residents rather than self-selected outliers." Meet your outliers. I'll be done in a minute. Well, contrary to the writer's opinion, it happens that we have survey data, which is a clear representation of the community, the survey results from the master plan, which indicate the residents of Braintree prefer single-family and low-density housing. The people have spoken. Are you listening? The MBCA has been very effective fighting to protected neighborhoods. We shall continue. We have supported and encouraged inclusionary zoning, and we support further discussion about appropriate development in appropriate locations. For years, we have requested a comprehensive plan from the South Shore Plaza. They have ignored these requests. They have not dealt with the town in good faith. We call upon the Simon Properties to prepare and present a five-year plan to the town for reimagining of their property before the town considers any further development from the South Shore Plaza. Because the RG-PUD is such a monster project, we call upon the Planning Board to reject it in its entirety. And furthermore, we call upon ZOM Living to remove this project from further consideration and withdraw their proposal. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Crogan. I live on Mannetwick Avenue, which is parallel to West Street, which is parallel to Hollis Ave., which is parallel to Storze Ave., which is parallel to Common Street. I say that because between Black Friday and New Year's Day, those roads are a cut-through. They're backed up. They are impossible to get in and out of. We see cars flying by our house all the time, just cutting through. The councilor says that the traffic won't be impacted by this huge project. The traffic is already impacted for us who live in the Flaherty neighborhoods. It's a nightmare. It's a cut-through. I, too, am a lifelong resident of Braintree. I've seen Braintree go from farms, swamps, factories, to single-housing homes, which is nice. It didn't oversaturate the town. It created neighborhoods and communities. This project will change that neighborhood in Flaherty forever. The councilor said that five stories is appropriate because Granite Street is at that elevation. Granite Street is about a half a mile from where the project is. It's different at Flaherty. It's going to overshadow Flaherty School and the houses in that area. Five stories is huge to those people. Maybe not Granite Street, but to Flaherty School, it's going to overshadow it. There's just no reason to build this project. I know the town needs taxes. I've been paying taxes for 40 years, property taxes on my house for 40 years. I've never seen it go down. So it's time to stop making excuses for tax base. It's time to think of the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Wansell. I live at 74 Spring Street, and I'd like to address Braintree's inadequate infrastructure for this kind of a project. The reservoir that we have cannot sustain the water usage that this project would have. We're talking about 80 gallons of water per person per day. Our reservoir didn't fill this year until the end of January. We need more water in this town. Secondly, they alluded to the pumping station on Common Street. That pumping station was rebuilt in 2000. It had a life expectancy of 60 years. We're about a third of the way through it now. That would have to be rebuilt as well. So for those reasons... So for those reasons, I would oppose this project because of the inadequate infrastructure that we have in Braintree. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
I want to thank you for your attention. I did jot down a few notes as that.
Oh, just your name and address.
Certainly. Name is Helen Dooner, D-O-O-N-E-R, Foster Road, Braintree, long-term resident. As I started to say, I take issue with much that was presented by the professional who is working for the powerhouse that has ample funds to well afford the building that they are trying to promote. Case in point is, he did cite a factor that having residents nearby stores would have the opportunity to shop and that would be a great advantage. Well, a couple of things come to mind. First of which is, since COVID, there's been a trend and a market trend toward people using mail order. And I'm sure practically everyone sitting in this facility has received some sort of mail order, that they're not rushing out to the store and that they have access to Amazon. If they want something, there's a discount and they're getting it. So that, to me, tends to be a misrepresentation. Another factor that he spoke of is the South Shore Plaza. In reality, if you go and you visit other Simon properties, you will quickly come to the realization that the South Shore Plaza has been treated like a stepsister. It has not had much improvement through the years and it's just more or less maximizing whatever they can get from the people of the South Shore. Also, there is the issue about stores. I come back to that once again, which is stores such as, thank you, stores such as It's really a real estate business. It's not really merchandise as such. And what they're doing at the present moment in many of the largest stores is minimizing the amount of floor space they have in light of the new trend of people utilizing, as I say, mail order. I just want to glance at my notes, if I may.
You may.
And thank you very much. As I conclude, in light of the fact that there is a time issue, I definitely appreciate Braintree. It's not by accident I'm here. I'm a selective person and it is the character of Braintree. And do we want to look like a high-class community? Go to several of them. Case in point would be Quincy, that you're approaching, the area. Do you want to look like that? I think so. I thank everyone for your attention and I ask you to keep your consideration, for your careful consideration, that we try to maintain Braintree as it is, even though my house is maybe 60 years old and from some professionals' point of view, obviously they're not the well-kept properties.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we do get to have everyone who wants to make a comment, comments. If we could really try to stick to the two minutes, that would be very helpful. So thank you. Just name and address for the record, please.
Donna Nichols on the 267 Franklin Street in Braintree. Since 1982, thank you very much for being able to speak. I should let you know that I was the administrative assistant for John F. Collins in Boston. He was the mayor that got Polio and I also have worked at a Boston law firm, a corporate one. As Mayor Corrus declared, "This proposal on the nine acres would stress our water and sewer." I'm sure these apartments are about to cost $2,000 a month with all the activities they have going. They had 1,100 calls from the police to go to the mall. We know that there had gangs down there. There was an incident up in the food court where someone was shot. Some of the seniors in Braintree would become homeless. You know that COVID has hit the town very hard. This means that everything would escalate in price. All your property taxes, your water, your gas, your belt, electric, all of that would cost more money. Seniors would have to choose whether they would take their prescriptions or whether they would have to cut back on their food and all food prices have gone up, as you Also, Braintree is an inclusive city. Due to the impact of increased traffic and the cost of living in Braintree would make our town a white elephant, that no one would want to be able to live here, would be just the wealthy and the elite. We know that there's been a traffic problem getting off 128 at the mall. Also, they go up the side through the residential area up to Washington Street. If you tried to go Washington Street about 4:30 down by the library, it's all backed up. The same thing happens down Washington Street. I live on Franklin. Forget it. You don't even want to go back out on your drive, which many of us have to do, on a state road from 12:30 until 6 o'clock at night. Someone could be so outraged about the development of these nine records. You know what happens in the paper? They would have a vendetta against it. I don't want to see that happen. Anybody could be able to drive along the Flaherty School. Okay.
You can hand that to the director this evening.
Can I just say one thing?
Yep, you may. Finish up.
We must not approve of a Goliath of a corporation to change the fabric of living in our town by millions of dollars. Sometimes it seems to give financial clout, but not in our town. God bless all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Lorraine DeAndrea. I live at 169 Walnut Street. I had mouth surgery, so I'm not talking real well.
That's okay. Don't worry.
I live at 169 Walnut Street. I'll keep it short and sweet. I had a couple of thoughts here based on what they said. I live off of West Walnut Street, I meant the base of where Lakeside School and that all meets up. First of all, part of the condition of the mall having the second floor was Lakeside was closed. That was a battle in itself back then. When he talks about there's going to be three different types of access in there, he always says residential. He never speaks about any like businesses, the Amazon deliveries coming into this place. And it does show Lakeside being open still. And a couple of things, and I'm jumping here, but I just want to get it in real quick. When did we start selling our streets to companies? I don't get that. And my other thing is here, from the last meeting, and I didn't get up and speak because we couldn't speak at the last meeting, but there was something that was stated at the last meeting that the plaza's never been held accountable on the zoning and if they were, that none of us would be here tonight talking about this because the South Shore Plaza hasn't been held accountable, that this company couldn't have drawn up these plans. Now, I don't know if that's 100% accurate or not, but that's what I got out of the last meeting. And it has to do with the zoning?
We'll make record of that and we'll look into that.
So I was just kind of curious about that. And the last thing about, you know, everyone talks about how they're changing. Braintree's always been a town, not a city. My family's been here since World War II and that was the reason why we all decided to stay here. I just hope that they listen because this is not a good fit for our neighborhood.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Rob Cadare of Washington Street. What can I say that hasn't been said already? Most people here, I'm looking around, like, if we're able to pull this big of a crowd on a Wednesday night in the middle of winter, I think it's pretty clear, the people of Braintree oppose this monstrosity of a project. We have, we have an issue with traffic, especially in this area. How many of us haven't sat in about a half hour of traffic going between Dave and Buster's and Five Corners? How many of us have sat in traffic for a half an hour going from the Greek Orthodox Church up to the corner of Washington Street? Most of us have. Adding in this many residences into that area would be an absolute disaster and that would become the normal, the Black Friday traffic, that would become the normal. And in the end, it's like, I mean, Braintree's the town that we all, that we were born in, that we moved to. And if you did move here, you moved here for a reason. Braintree's a special place. The Braintree that we all grew up in, the Braintree that we all lived in. Developments like this aren't a one-off. You build one, there's going to be another one right behind it. You build two of them, there's going to be more of them coming in here. And if this keeps going on, hey, it's only a matter of time before we're going to be Quincy South. So the question that I have, do we want to keep alive the character of the town that we love, the town that we grew up in, the town that we moved to? Or are we willing to sell it out to out-of-state developers to construct these soulless dense packs in the middle of our neighborhoods? Braintree is where America was founded. John Hancock, John Adams, Samuel Adams, the idea of democracy started here. All I can say, this is what democracy looks like. This is the people of Braintree saying, "We don't want this project." And I very respectfully ask the council to please shutter this project and please to save Braintree. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, just a friendly reminder, I know that we're all here and we have a lot of energy and feelings about this and I appreciate that. I think as a board, we're trying to listen to both sides and I think being able to hear the commentary, the hand raising is very helpful. I feel like that's very powerful tonight, but the clapping is very unnerving. So like, if we could just be a little bit more respectful on that and use more of the hand raising, I think it will help just understand and listen more attentively. So I would appreciate if we could try to be a little bit less clapping and yelling and more hand-holding. Thank you very much. My anxiety thanks you. Please, go ahead.
My turn? My turn? Okay. I'm Susan O'Leary and I live on Reservoir Circle, which is the cul-de-sac right in front of the Flaherty School. I don't normally come to these meetings. I'm just too busy. But a few years ago, I did. And this is like deja vu all over again. I think it was Yogi Berra who said that? Because at that time, what the South Shore Plaza wanted to do was put a sports complex, where it now wants to put this steroids. They wanted to put a sports complex right beside an elementary school. That didn't make sense to me. And after the Braintree residents stood up and fought against it, the developers and the South Shore Plaza withdrew their petition. So now we have a new petition. It's like deja vu all over again. And what they want to do now is say, you know, "We're not going to have a sports complex. Let's have two apartment buildings. And by the way, we're coming into your neighborhood and we're coming into your town because like the lady previous to me, I still think of Braintree as a town." And what they're saying is, "We expect you to change. We want to take this land, but we want you to change your zoning laws. We want you to change your bylaws. We want you to allow our variances." Excuse me?
Okay, go ahead. Continue.
Oh, thank you. And I was always taught that when you're the new kid in town, you're supposed to blend in with the town, not the other way around. Now, I have heard about senior citizens and looking at me, we all know I'm a senior citizen. There's no doubt about it. But right now, between my mortgage, my homeowners, and my property taxes, I pay approximately $1,500 to $1,600 a month. That's not with cable or internet utilities. That's just the three basic things. And they're saying that if I really want to, if elderly people really want to live out their lives in Braintree, we can sell our homes and move into an apartment, which means I would have to go into a smaller place and the average rent is about $2,400. Now, it doesn't make sense for me to want to sell my home and spend more money to get less.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And my last point, this project does not fit the neighborhood at all. When I drive through Quincy right now, there's one ugly apartment after another. I look at the pictures they put up and, boy, they look nice, but in actuality, it really just looks like the city of Quincy apartment buildings on steroids. That's all it looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Justin Huang on 25 Lakeside Drive. I am the closest resident, 500, maybe 550 feet from this development, but I want to question, how far is this development to Greenwich? This sounds like a deja vu because I always remember 2019. Jim Fox was here to threaten me, say, "If I want to put the building in your backyard, I could because we own the land." This is what happened and the mall, Simon Mall, is not here, it's not being countable. Attorney Frank was talking about this 8.7 unused land. Who made it unusable? Who purchased that to Lakeside Drive property? And who ended this with 99 restaurants? Who made that land unusable? That's my first question. The second question, you talk about no crimes. I see through it when a car drove past Flaherty fence, high school kids came to my garage, asked for shelter. Think, I may think about it. And our neighbor Michelle saying she was the same, at the same time, saw boys biking to the pond with his fish pole, just trying to go fishing. Imagine if she did not call the boy off the road, what would be happened that day when the car ran through our neighborhood in 90 mile per hour? So I can, that's, if you're talking about no crime, this is what happened even though we were fenced with Flaherty neighborhood. What about privacy of our kids? Five-story child, our kids outside playing with the softball, girls' softball field. We don't know. Nobody can promise who lives there with a one-year lease contract. But I'm sure, we all know with the current technology, the Flaherty kids have no more privacy once this is being built. privacy once this is being built. And living on the Lakeside Drive, we bought our house because the community that we love about. My, four of my kids go to Flaherty school there. I know what Flaherty community is. If you ask me why I love this community, why I'm standing up here and fight for it, I can talk for two hours. Because all my neighbor will come by in the morning and smile, saw the kid walking through. And the, our community, the kids don't even need parents. They just can walk and by to the school. And after all, it's also, we're concerned about the bird migrations, birds that you see flying during the warm days on top of 195, 128 Route 3 from Blue Hill. Braintree's reservoir is connected to it. So with that to say, I just giving the summary, I'm here to ask the council to stop this project for good. Our residents is tired to fight for our safety, tired to fight for our neighborhood and reclaim our neighborhood, so I'm asking the board to close this project, reject it for good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Liz Page. I live at 137 Store Zav. I am also a lifelong Braintree resident and I am also the vice president of the North Braintree Civic Association. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in opposition to this proposal tonight, the proposal known as RGPUD. I am so grateful for the tremendous support displayed by the residents here tonight. They have come out tonight, the huge majority of them, to express their opposition to this proposal. Braintree residents turn out when they want to be heard, when they feel that their voices and their concerns are not being listened to. When one neighborhood is being threatened, all of Braintree's neighborhoods are being threatened. As part of the Master Plan Steering Committee, I am honored to represent Braintree's residents. But I must tell everyone here tonight that there are some elected and appointed officials who feel that they know better than the residents. And when the residents survey clearly reflected that the large majority of our residents do not want any more high-density building or high-density apartments, there are some officials who are dismissive of this survey. Well, we can clearly see from tonight's turnout that the residents survey is correct. And if you drive around town, you will see hundreds of signs and more are currently being ordered. This is just another example that shows the residents survey is spot-on. In addition, the Master Plan Vision Statement prioritizes protecting residential neighborhoods. This includes making sure that any development near a residential neighborhood should have an adequately sized buffer zone and that any development near a residential neighborhood should be of a compatible scale. These are just two examples of where this proposal, RGPUD, fails miserably. I'm inviting everybody here to please come and join in on our next Master Plan Steering Committee next Thursday at 7:00. I think you'd all be very interested in it. So tonight, I am asking the town officials to listen to the residents. This proposal, a request for a PUD zoning overlay, should be given an unfavorable recommendation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Moore. I live at 56 Howie Road. I have nothing written, but I would like to say that my children are fifth-generation Braintree. I would like to think there will be a sixth generation here and that is for a reason. That is because of the integrity of this town, the way it has been a town. I would like to speak a little bit to things that have not been mentioned yet about, I think there was nearly an $800,000 tax profit that was mentioned. It is estimated, from my understanding, that would be about 25, 26 children added to the school system. Some quick math will tell you that that eats up half of that profit right then and there without even talking about the police, fire, extra resources the town would be required to have and pay for to support everything related to these residences. Also, there was mention of there being 20% less kids at Flaherty. Well, having three kids gone through Flaherty, I can promise you that before they moved the fifth grade to East, they had well over 20% too many at Flaherty. The cafeteria gymatorium was busting at the seams. Yes, cafeteria gymatorium, a lot of people don't know that phrase, but it was needed because every square inch, including closets of that school, was utilized and it was busting at the seams. So there's so much truly that could be said that hasn't been said already, but I do take almost offense to the pandering of this big profit that we're going to see because in my eyes, it does nothing but cost this town, the integrity of which it's always been. The costs that it will cost us, not make us. And you're talking about all these residences, almost 500, who have no investment in this town. They don't own, they're year-to-year leases. They have no critical investment to caring about everything that happens in this town. We're not talking about over 55 units only and a third of the amount that people could, like me someday, maybe sell my children my house and go move down the street to a nice over 55 unit. So, you know, that is something I don't see in Braintree that we need. So I respectfully ask that you not just shut this down, but shut it down with the vehemence that we all came here with tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, good evening to you all. It's an honor to be here with the people of Braintree and with all of you to talk about this horrible project. My name is Patrick J. Leonard, Jr. I was an Army officer, lifelong resident of the town of Braintree, other than the time I spent in the Armed Forces and the time that I spent in private business and teaching and educational administration overseas, more than 20 years. Other than that, in a few years living in an apartment in Weymouth, my life has been here. Braintree High School, class of 1963, and a history teacher. I like to start by saying, "We, the people," to quote a document with which you're all familiar, "do not want this project." If this project requires, and I understand from you, Kelly, the meeting that we went to, 31, the young man who spoke said, "They're not variances, they are changes, zoning changes." But if requires 31 changes, why are we even considering anything like this? If, if the average person, or let's say you, you grant the 31 changes, variances, whatever term you want to use, another developer would say, "Braintree is a shoe-in. We only need 18 changes. We can build anything we want. We only need 20 changes. They gave them 31. Imagine, we only need five, 12." It opens the door, as another gentleman said, "to an absolute tidal wave of disaster. We don't need that." The young man who spoke said, "The plaza, this would attract more business to the plaza." How many people in this room want the plaza to get bigger? I think most people do not want more business over there. Those of you who may not know what Parkside Circle is, and I was surprised to learn something tonight, I'm living in an obsolete house. My house was built in 1947. But you'll be happy to hear, I blew out all the candles before I came over here tonight.
Sorry, sir, if you could just keep, just address the board, please. So it's on B-CAM and they're recording you, so when you turn, it's harder to hear you.
I know, I know what's right. I know the people who are recording. And B-CAM is excellent to give the people of Braintree what is happening in meetings like this. We need B-CAM. Ma'am, I am so happy that you said that B-CAM is covering this because that means people are going to see it live right now and people are going to see it in the weeks and more people and could fit this building will know about it. Okay, I live right across the Braintree Dam from that desolate piece of land which was mentioned. I think there is beauty in desolation and I love looking at that desolation every day. It's not about me. I'll be 78 years old in June. It's about the people of Braintree in the future. It's not about PJ Leonard. It's about who's going to be here five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now. It said that land is underutilized. I don't think we have to fill up every single empty space in the town of Braintree to make it utilized. Empty space is utilization. Every single one of us needs that empty space. How many of you just want to walk through an empty space sometimes and just think about the beauty of our town?
Sir, that's going on three and a half minutes. If you have written commentary that you would like to submit to the board, that would be great. I just, there's a long line of people I would love for them to have a chance to speak.
And every one of them has a right to speak and I need about 30 seconds, ma'am. And I do appreciate that. I guess I just want to conclude by saying that I, as a former Army officer, that I as a teacher, principal, and proud citizen of the town of Braintree, would ask every single one of you to now and forever reject this terrible project. Because as you see in back of me tonight and in front of all of you, to end what I am saying tonight the way that I began, we, the people of Braintree, do not want this project. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelsey Stoker. I do not frequent events like this at all. I have a seven-week-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old at home, so you know it's really bad if I had to get a sitter and I had to come out here to speak. So I, I did want to just share my story because I think those of us who are young parents may not be able to get here tonight. I grew up in Braintree. I grew up on Cedar Street, 37 Cedar Street. Me and my husband, when we got married, we bought our first home on Walnut Street. We upgraded recently, a few years ago, into what we hope will be our forever home, which is on Dean Street, which cuts right between Cuchedo and Oak Street. So I have been in this neighborhood my whole life. I was a graduate of Flaherty School and that's the reason why I bought in this neighborhood now, 30 years later. It was the ability as a Flaherty student to have the freedom to walk home from school and back with your friends. That freedom, but also the safety net that's around you because of the neighborhood, that's what drew me back here as now as a parent, as a married woman for my family. And this type of project does threaten that for a long term. So I don't, again, I don't know much about the process. I just know that I do not want that down, down there at the school that I plan to send my two girls to in just a few years. So thank you for listening to us and thank you so much for all the support that's being shown here. I hope that this flows the right way. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Maria Bonfiglioli and I live on West Street. I wish I could take credit for the words that I'm speaking tonight, but this is a letter. Dear Chairman Joyce and Planning Board members, Jill Coyle, past Planning Board Chair, prepared a letter for tonight but is unable to attend this hearing and asks that I read her letter for the record. She has requested that she be afforded the professional courtesy that prior Chairman Harnes extended to her as a past Planning Board Chair and allow me to present her full presentation. For those that aren't familiar with North Braintree, the South Shore Plaza is located on Granite Street, a very well-traveled state road. What you may not realize is that the other three sides of the plaza abut residential neighborhoods. These neighborhoods existed well before the plaza existed. Common Street, Lakeside Drive, and many smaller roads off of those streets abut plaza property. When the plaza was granted a special permit, there were conditions required by the plaza to protect the residential neighborhoods, such as landscaping and buffers. In some areas, it was acres of open space that protected the neighborhoods. In others, it was mere feet. As the plaza continued to expand, the residential neighborhood closest to the back of the plaza and the Flaherty School became more encroached upon. The plaza bought residential parcels and demolished the homes. They finally purchased the last two residential properties on the end of Lakeside Drive, which they are using as part of this project. Approximately 50% of this property is part of the residential neighborhood that abutted the plaza and the balance was once part of the residential neighborhood. Through unsuccessful rezone attempts to change these parcels to highway business from the resident B district, the plaza and the applicant are before the board to receive a favorable recommendation to use a bylaw that was adopted by town meeting somewhere around the early 90s and has never been used. The Braintree zoning bylaw being applied is Section 135, 612, Planned Unit Development Regulations, applying to planned unit development or PUD districts. After reviewing application documents, I have identified areas that are unconventional and possibly have never been authorized or approved by the town of Braintree. Anomaly one, an authorization letter was provided by the owner of the plaza property. The reason for this is because the applicant does not yet own the property. Despite MGL Chapter 40, Section 5, Braintree zoning bylaw, Article 15, Section 135, 1501, zoning amendments, and Town Council's procedure for rezoning applications, the property owner is authorized to submit zoning amendments, a non-owner is not. None of these laws or procedures state that an authorized, an authorization from the property owner will allow submission of a zoning amendment. Anomaly two, the town's PUD bylaw is incomplete, incorrect, and does not provide density requirements, a key part of any zoning bylaw. This bylaw also notes that it was amended at the May 1991 annual town meeting by Article 36. 135, 612E1 refers to Section 135, 611C of the Braintree zoning bylaw. However, that bylaw is labeled reversed. It is also footnoted that it is applied to commercial daycare and was repealed on May 3, 2004 at special town meeting by Article 20. One possibility is that 135, 612E1 should have referred to Section 135, 612C of the Braintree zoning bylaw. However, that still provides no density requirements and erroneous information. This raises questions that pertain to the initial discussion between staff and the applicant's attorney. Some questions for staff. Upon receipt of the applicant's intention to use the PUD bylaw and since the bylaw had never been used since adoption over 20 years ago, did the planning department vet the bylaw to ensure relevance, accuracy, incompleteness? If yes, what research was done to identify what was missing so that it could be rectified immediately? If no, how was this addressed? Since the bylaw was missing density specific to PUD district and contained erroneous information, was the applicant told to develop their own bylaw? If this has not already been investigated, I currently have an outstanding FOIA request for the town meeting articles pertaining to this bylaw to see what the requirement should have been so that this bylaw can, at the very least, be updated to reflect what truly was adopted by town meeting. Once I receive this information, I will pass the results on to the planning director. Anomaly three, unfortunately, anomaly three was a result of anomaly two, which then caused an unprecedented process to take place. The unprecedented process was that an applicant wrote their own bylaw. The proposed bylaw, written by the applicant for their specific property, provides exemptions for themselves for 30 regulations under the Braintree zoning bylaw. To the best of my knowledge, this town has never had a specific bylaw for a specific applicant, actually written by the applicant. If approved, this is setting a very dangerous precedent for the town. Since this is a specific project for a specific property, one could argue this is spot zoning. Since this is a specific project for a specific property, one could argue this is spot zoning. Wikipedia's definition of spot zoning is the application...
Excuse me, do you have a lot left? It's seven minutes, and we still have a lot of people.
I just have one more page.
That's fine. I just asked how much was left. Thank you.
Jill's very thorough. Wikipedia's definition of spot zoning is the application of zoning to a specific parcel or parcels of land within a larger zoned area when the rezoning is usually at odds with the city's master plan and current zoning restrictions. Spot zoning may be ruled invalid as an arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable treatment of a limited parcel of land by a local zoning ordinance. While zoning regulates the land use in whole districts, spot zoning makes unjustified exemptions for a parcel or parcels within a district. The 30 exemptions previously mentioned can be found on the applicant's January 31 updated proposal, RG PUD bylaw, on the bottom of Page 2, which lists six, and on Page 3, which lists the balance of 24. Of the 30 exemptions, three of these are the foundation of the Braintree zoning bylaw, and a fourth is the criteria needed to approve a special permit. They are 135, 601 Table of Principal Uses, 135, 701 Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations and Notes, 135, 705 Multifamily Dwellings, 135, 503 Special Permit Procedures that Provide Specific Criteria for Rendering a Decision for a Special Permit. The 26 remaining bylaw exemptions address a variety of regulations. I would also like to note, the original bylaw proposal, available at the time of the NBC presentation, specifically requested a use-by-right for the proposal. Five days following the presentation, on the morning of the applicant's presentation, the proposal was changed to a special permit. However, Table 1, Table of Uses, has yet to be changed to SP for special permit. Also on Table 1, access across another zone is listed as a use-by-right. This requires further discussion, as the plaza's special permit included this, and I am not sure who will ultimately be responsible for the gate, but it must be a special permit and not a use-by-right. I have heard mention that some claim the plaza, Simon Properties, does not need a major modification to their existing special permit if this proposal and subsequent project is approved. I ask that staff clarify that tonight so the public is not receiving misleading information. In addition to all the concerns I provided, this proposal recommends almost 60 units per acre, which is two times greater than some of the town's densest projects and almost eight times greater than Section 135, 705 Multifamily Dwelling Bylaws Allow, which, incidentally, is one of the 30 exempted bylaws. Per the Town of Braintree Charter, Chapter 2.770, the powers and duty of the Planning Board are: The Planning Board shall exercise the powers and perform the duties provided by the town's zoning ordinances, the Commonwealth's Zoning Act, the subdivision control law, and any other relevant legislative acts and regulations, as may be amended. The Planning Board shall also serve as a special permit granting authority as provided by the town's ordinances. As a past Planning Board member who represented the town and the residents, I find it extremely difficult to understand how this proposal made it this far. I would not possibly support this proposal as it blatantly attempts, and in some cases violates, the very laws the Planning Board is here to support and enforce. A favorable recommendation would be contrary to the Board's responsibilities as specified in the town's charter. I respectfully request that the Board provide an unfavorable recommendation to this proposal and provide a detailed decision to the Town Council justifying that action. Thank you for your time and consideration. Jill Coyle.
Thank you. Thank you. While I do want to be respectful of everyone's commentary, and I do appreciate that very thought-out response, it was well over the allotted time, and I want people to feel like their voice is equal to everyone else's voice in this room. So if you stand up and you talk through your two minutes, it's just basically telling the other people in line that their voice isn't meant to be heard and yours is somehow more important. I think we're all here to have a conversation, and I just want people in line to have a chance to say what they'd like to speak this evening. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We're just trying to have a conversation.
Thank you. Steve Shasha-Hollis-Ev. Isn't Jill great? So I am also going to just focus on a few technical issues, concerns that I have with this. First and foremost, there is a special permit existing for this property, for all 112 acres, including the 8.7 acres that they are considering parceling off. That special permit states that every successor, and every successor in control of, every successor in interest in this property, this special permit applies to them. It also applies if the applicant in the future re-divides the site. So, you know, there's no arguing that the special permit applies to this new parcel. If this zoning goes through, both the larger parcel and the smaller parcel would be in violation of multiple conditions in the existing special permit. There are, I think, 135 of them. It's been said that this is an underutilized piece of property. It is underutilized by design. If you look at the special permit modification done in 2021 by the plaza, they listed their total building coverage at 25%, which is the maximum for highway business zone. So if you carve off nine acres, they will be at 27%.
701 notes, they can actually go to 30%. There's a note in 701 that says properties in the highway business district with parking structures can go to 30% building coverage.
But that would require modification of the special permit, would it not?
It would not. That's a zoning requirement in the dimensional table in the ordinance. We have 701, and then in the notes prescribe notes that relate to the dimensional table.
Okay. But there is no arguing that any modification to the property would change the special permit. The special permit requires that they not make any changes to the open space, not make any changes to the parking. So I think the argument here is you can zone it without modifying the special permit, but as soon as you split off that parcel, the special permit has to be modified. So I'm going to go back to a quote from Member Grove in that last meeting in 2021. "I don't think we want to be going and giving this as a piecemeal type of approval. Simon Properties has all the resources to present any expansion with the reduction of parking, and if it's done that way, then you, as a Planning Board member, have some leverageability. If this is taken away from you, there's not much you can do." Once this zoning goes through, what leverage does anybody in this town have to enforce the special permit on the plaza property? Section 206 allows us to fine them $100 a day. Is that going to get them to modify their special permit? This could easily be done through a major modification to the special permit and a presentation of a comprehensive plan for the entire property. In fact, it was mentioned that a master plan that ignores this is incomplete. Well, the master plan does not ignore this. It says specifically that the town wants to see community-supported economic growth plans for any area of town that is appropriate for increased development, such as the South Shore Plaza. It is specified in the master plan that what we want is a community-supported economic growth plan for the plaza, not for 8.7 acres of the plaza's property. Finally, I would just point out that one thing that was brought up tonight and earlier at the January meeting was that Zom has been working on this development for a year now. So I want you to think about that timeline. The timestamp on the clerk's approval of the parking reduction for the plaza was January 3 of 2022. To say that Zom has been working on this for a year means that when that approval was done, Simon Properties already knew what their plan was. That's important because during that meeting, Director Santucci-Razi said specifically that the South Shore Plaza, as this board is aware, sought a rezon of portions of land that they own that are currently residence be in open space. It was very clear that that was something that was not going to be supported by the Simon listened to her say that, knowing that they planned on an even more intense use of those parts of the property and said nothing. What they did say was that they wanted to be proactive, and they were looking at lifestyle retail, office and medical use, fitness use, and hotels. Nothing about this kind of development, and certainly not on this part of the property. So what residents are asking for and what they expect is a plan for the whole property, and to take that away from them, to allow Simon to develop just one piece of the property without even showing up here tonight. You will see Zom here. Where is Simon? They say that maybe this will be a catalyst for reinventing the mall. What if it's not? Again, what leverage do you have if you approve this one piece ahead of time and then expect them to follow up with improvements to the mall? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. Benjamin Cohen, 89 Walnut Street. I come to you with a much less analytical or probably argumentative approach, just very heartfelt. I moved here four years ago from Somerville. I've lived around the country, moved here with my wife, and now my two-year-old son actually moved in the house next to where Kelsey used to live, before she moved within the neighborhood. And I'm here today simply because I'm living my dream, right? When I grew up in Sharon, Massachusetts, I didn't have a lot of opinions of Braintree, but I'm here because we stopped by a house in a beautiful neighborhood and said we want to grow a family here, and that is, in my opinion, at risk. Ever since we moved in, we have now people speeding up the street and nothing being done about it. In the last six months, we've had three car break-ins. I mean, who has car break-ins in a residential neighborhood in a supposedly safe suburb? That just doesn't make sense, and I don't know how an increase of hundreds, if not thousands, of additional residents in a very concentrated zone makes that any safer, any less likely. And I want my son to be able to walk to school, as Kelsey said, in a safe and beautiful Braintree, and I think we should look to the other folks like myself who want to move here, right? Who want to create a big town, a beautiful town, and I don't think we need developments to do it. I think that you can bring people of all walks of life here and develop a wonderful community. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Mulaney. I live on 89 Herbert Road, and when I heard Mr. Leonard say when his house was built, "I also was built in 1947." I served as a counselor, and I heard Counselor Marinelli tell us how lucky we are that we're going to collect $750,000, and that's going to take care of the salaries of the employees in the town, the salary increases. We can take care of everything. But then I started thinking about how, when they start building these, what we call it, monster project, how is it going to be for the kids at the Flaherty School? How long is it going to take for the dirt, the sand, the noise? And are there going to be any mitigation provisions that are going to protect that? That $700,000, is that going to take care of the additional police that we need, just to take care of the people? Forget about additional crime. What about the ambulances and the fire trucks that are going to have to go in there? When we did Dave and Buster's, they donated two police cars as mitigation to help out, and they also guaranteed, I believe, two detailed police officers on Friday and Saturday night. Because I'm so old and it was so long ago I achieved anything, one of my greatest achievements was getting the Mills Tax passed in Braintree. Three-quarters of 1% delivered $1.5 million a year, and all we had to do is flick a switch. Think about that. $1.5 million, and if we approved this project, we're going to get $750,000, and we're going to basically spend it. All that money is going to be spent, and government has a way of getting rid of it. Let's protect our town the way it is. I saw the two. Goodbye.
Hello. Thank you to the Board. My name is Steve Leon. I live at 69 Dickerman Lane. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all. I am against this project. I don't think that the town can support it as far as the traffic that's going to be implemented with this. And if you drive across town, you can tell it's just not going to work. So what happens once these buildings are built and the traffic doesn't work? I can see down the line that the residents of this building are going to push for access other ways. We can say right now that they're not going to have access down Lakeside Drive, but if you're having a gate that's still a drivable road, who knows whatever happens in the future? Maybe those residents become on the board. Maybe different things happen, but we can't be short-sighted with this. We need to look at it and head it off. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Harren, 141 Walnut Street. I will be quick. My house was built in 1930. Many of you, including some here today, are working very hard on updating our master plan. That process should be complete, and all new development should be consistent with it. I suspect this project will not be consistent with it. 30 bylaw exemptions, noise, trap noise, light, billboards, and others. Granting 30 bylaw exemptions is poor policy, poor practice, and sets a bad precedent for the future. I urge you to turn this down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Mussozzo, 99 Colby Road. Thank you, Erin, for doing a good job running this crowd. Just two points. Hanover Crossing was mentioned several times as setting a precedence of something that the residents voted on and wanted there. Well, Hanover Crossing, and I just looked up real quickly, they put in a little under 300 apartments on 13 acres. This is a little under 500 apartments on eight-and-a-half acres. I shop at Market Basket. I don't live beside the inner Hanover residence. I think lots of people go down there. And my other point is the traffic, of course. When I was teaching at the high school, I walked every day, and when I left the high school walking, I could make it to the bottom of my hill off of West Street before the school buses. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Megan Stallman. I live on Blanchard Boulevard. So first, I'd say thank you to all of you. So I'm unclear where the purview of the Planning Board ends and where the mayor's authority begins, so I'm sorry if this overlaps or goes too far. We live in the Flaherty District. I have one child currently there and another one possibly going there, depending on districting. And I'm acutely aware of the challenges that face this town in terms of school contracts, redistricting, master plan. There's a lot going on, and a lot of people are here at all the same meetings, so I respect all of us for getting here. When my husband and I purchased our home in Braintree, it was the expectation we'll be here forever. We even have a burial plot. Like, we are, we're in Braintree. We're not going anywhere. But I know that we're a community who has to work together. We have people of all ages, you know, from zero to over 100, all income levels, I think as a... And I think it's important that we all work together to try and find solutions that help everybody. All different languages, backgrounds, people who are new to Braintree, people who are born in Braintree, et cetera. My question is if it's possible to change these plans or adjust them. Like, I don't love the current plans, but I'm also not against having something go there. Like, for example, could it become three stories instead of five stories? Like, really make sure there's no access in Lakeside Drive? I know everyone's worried about it being accessible, but just straight up, no access for anything. You know, add traffic calming, speed bumps. I hate speeders. I'm usually yelling at people. If you speed on Blanchard Boulevard, I'd probably yell at you. So I get it, you know? But I want us all to work together. And also I ask again, I know this is you or the mayor, but if this goes forward, that Flaherty has a seat at the table to be part of official conversations to see how the school district can be a part of the conversations and make sure everyone's looking out for each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's all right, we'll take the next three remaining speakers and then we will end the public comment just for now, this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Eric O'Neill. I'm here with my wife, Mary. We live at 161 Walnut Street. I also am a lifelong resident. I'm a graduate of Lakeside School, that's the way I prefer to call it. I was a student there when Ms. Flaherty was the principal. My three daughters went to that school and went on to graduate from Braintree High. I've committed my entire life to the town of Braintree. I bet was a member, I was a town meeting member at one time. I'm good friends with Kelly Moore and thank him and the leadership of the North Braintree Civic Association. This project is an abomination. It's too big, it's too dense. I do not believe the figures from the tax revenue. I do not believe the figures for the number of children in 315 units. You're telling me, since a majority of them are going to be two and three-bedroom units, that we're only going to have 21 or 26 or seven kids? That makes no sense to me. We're a town where we attract people of higher income who want to be close to the city. And if they do provide life sciences and the old Lord and Taylor's and maybe Sears goes under and something like that goes in there, you are going to attract higher-income people who may transition into a single-family home later in life, but for the interim, in their twenties and thirties, they're going to maybe potentially live at this facility. Overwhelming, Flaherty School. Secondly, I've always thought in the town of Braintree, we had an ordinance that said you can only build four stories. I think the reason why the developer wants to put parking in what's called a podium-style parking is because they do not have enough land to provide parking around the building. My concern is, are there going to be charging stations in this podium parking? Has anybody recently realized how many lithium battery cars catch on fire? Do we have the facilities necessary? Are we going to have them put in chemical respondents to that kind of fire in the parking garage? These are incredibly hot fires that any fire department that's encountered them will tell you, they have, they're incredibly hard to put out. So I'm totally against this project. I think it's inappropriate at the end of Lakeside Drive. I don't even think it fits in that well with the South Shore Plaza, to be honest with you. I think it's an opportunity for Simon to sell a chunk of unusable land for $20 million and stick that in their pocket and screw the town of Braintree. And I hope, I hope that you all will look at this project and say, "This isn't right. This is inappropriate. It's an overdevelopment and I don't believe the tax revenue is going to cover the cost to this town. School costs, water costs, fire department, police department, highway improvements, sewer lines, water lines, electrical lines. This project just is not appropriate." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Henry Russell. I live at 10 Norton Street in Braintree. And for 17 years, I was the chairman of the Concom. I lived through the rebuilding of the dam for this reservoir. It used to be called the Quincy Reservoir, which was fire protection for the shipyard. And we had it rebuilt, we renamed it the Braintree Veterans Memorial Dam. I find it interesting that Mr. Leonard and his father, who at the time were very much against rebuilding the dam, because they wanted to swim in the reservoir. And we insisted on rebuilding the dam because we were concerned about the people, most of whom are here tonight, of being flooded out every time we had a severe rainstorm. We put in an additional 60-inch overflow so there's no flooding down there now. The only thing I really want to say, I'm not going to say for or against, but the planning board is kind of caught between a rock and a hard place. Yet it's filed under 40A and if you deny it, it'll go to 40B. 40B, unless, and for those who don't understand the legislation, that the town loses control of developing this. As a 40A, the town can issue all sorts of conditions that could control the development of this particular site. And I strongly believe that you should keep control. And that way, the requests of the residents in the area can be considered and included in the development of any conditions on this site. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Barry Cullen. I'm from 85 Hayward Street. And I'm here to promote a greener Braintree. I think that when we take vacant land and we put together a building of almost 500 units, we're going to create so much pollution. We're going to pollute the waters, those beautiful waters in the pitches. We're going to, we'll probably be using a lot of fossil fuel. I'm not sure what they're using to heat the building, but I want to see a greener Braintree. There's nothing wrong with seeing vacant land. There's nothing wrong with using vacant land for something else. We don't need to turn into a city and have pollution all over the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think Counselor Flaherty, I am going to give you a chance to speak after the public, just before staff comments. So I think you just had one person behind you, so I wanted, did you want to come up and comment? You can be our last public comment. Yep? And then Counselor Flaherty can come back up.
My name is Jim Foley. I live at 290 Carmen Street. I can see the Flaherty School right through my backyard. And I'll be able to see this complex behind the Flaherty School if it goes through. I've been fortunate enough to raise five kids at that home. All of them went to Braintree Public Schools. Three of them are now homeowners here in town. And I hope everyone considers that Simons is a big company. They're not going to do anything for people in Braintree. Hell, Simons doesn't even own it anymore. It's owned by BlackRock and Vanguard and all of these big money-managing companies that are investing offshore money back into the United States. And ZOM? Mr. Marinelli, ZOM's a Dutch company. I'll bet you're making a score on this one.
Oh, sir.
And understand, Mr. Marinelli, I'm not trying to insult you. I think you're very articulate. You're a wonderful lawyer and it was a pleasure to sit there and listen to your presentation. But at a time when everything that's going on in this country, do we really want the Dutch and other foreign companies coming in and buying up property in places like Braintree and Massachusetts? Are the Chinese buying up property out in the Midwest? I thank you very much for letting me come up here. I hope you know that I'm not for this project at all. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you. Thank you very much for the public comment. We are going to move on to just the review of the staff report, which was produced for the project, and then I will turn it over to some board member comments. If you have questions, comments you'd like to bring up this evening, we will do that. I had noticed that Counselor Flaherty was waiting to speak, so Counselor Flaherty, if you want to come forward and share your commentary. Thank you.
My name is Julia Flaherty and I am the District One Town Counselor. The zoning proposal that's before you tonight directly affects the neighborhoods that I represent. So I am addressing you this evening to let you know that I think this plan is not a good one for Braintree for a number of reasons. First of all, Simon Property needs to come to the table to explain what their plan is to invest in the whole piece of property, to keep it economically robust in the changing retail economy that we're in. Because the last thing that we want is to place housing behind a mall if it is not going to be invested in properly so that it can possibly decline. That would be terrible. The housing also, if we were to put it there, needs to be thoughtfully integrated into their overall plan, which is not what the proposal looks like. It's a giant block of housing next to a giant block of retail with no plan for connectivity between the two. So they don't support each other in the way that really well-designed housing and retail are meant to do. The scale of the design is out of proportion with the scale of the adjacent neighborhood. I think it would feel okay from the mall side of things, but it would bloom over Lakeside, the Lakeside Drive side of things. And that should not be ignored. The Master Plan Steering Committee arrived at language to describe that new development needs to be compatibly scaled. Arriving in that language was not easy, took a lot of discussion, that's what we came to. And I think that this development just can't be characterized that way. The PUD promises 30% open space, but this isn't significantly above what is already required in the current zoning code. And the increase is so small that I think it's disingenuous to call this a secondary use. You have to have two uses for a PUD. Residential is one, open space is meant to be the second one, but it's such a small amount of open space that I don't think it constitutes a secondary use. And much of the proposed open space is not publicly accessible. And the walking path that would be open to the public is essentially a short paved path to nowhere, unless you count a parking lot as its destination. I have received a tremendous amount of communication about this. And residents have overwhelmingly expressed nothing but concern, all kinds of concerns. You've heard lots of concerns tonight. I think that housing at the Plaza might be an idea with merit, but this plan, this plan just isn't very well thought out. And I think it should be withdrawn in its current form.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much for your comments this evening. If I could ask Director Santucci-Razi to give us an overview of the staff report and where we kind of are in the process, and then we can open it up to the board for additional commentary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And for those that have not had an opportunity to view the staff report, it is on the town website under our current documents section, along with the rest of the documents for this project. And if you're interested, you can pull it up on your phone for more detail. So through the chair, the staff report is basically based on the PUD bylaw itself in looking at that ordinance and evaluating what is being proposed against what the ordinance requires and primarily looking at the purpose of the ordinance. Does the board want me to actually read from the report or how much detail are you looking for this evening?
I guess whatever you feel like is appropriate. I know some of, like, a quicker overview when we have, I guess, less.
Okay.
I think just what you would feel is appropriate to convey
Okay.
understanding for people who aren't as well-versed in zoning bylaws.
So there's five purposes in the ordinance. And number one is to allow for greater variety and flexibility in development of housing types. Number two is making housing units available to moderate-income residents who might otherwise have difficulty finding homes within the town. Number three is promote the permanent preservation of open space. Number four is facilitate the construction and maintenance of streets, utilities, public services in a more economical and efficient manner. And number five is promote retail and service uses closely related to the residential sections of the PUD in a manner which blends all land uses into an aesthetically complementary whole. And my comments related to these purposes are that overall, the plan is lacking. Overall, what is proposed is overwhelming. The open space as considered as being proposed as a use is part of this PUD is deficient. The inclusionary requirements proposed are not in line with any of the discussions that have been happening in the community throughout the last year-plus. The second section of the ordinance talks about authority to grant permits and just basically spells out that if and when a PUD is approved by the council, the planning board can issue a special permit. There's really no comment required in that particular case. The minimum standards, the plan meets some of the minimum standards and doesn't meet a lot of the minimum standards. Again, getting back to, this is overwhelming. This is fairly overwhelming for this property. And I spent a great deal of time doing a lot of research on different types of retail centers that have residential components. And this particular proposal is far larger from a unit count, from a massing count and from a building size than I would say probably all of the examples I was able to find. Section E in the ordinance talks about the dimensional sections of the ordinance. And I know there was some comments earlier. And the PUD bylaw does in fact allow, whether people like that or not, for the applicant to, or the one proposing this particular PUD, in this case, Simon Properties and their affiliates, that they can set their own density. And that isn't something that is unusual from a PUD. A PUD is, in my opinion, a cross between zoning and a mini-site plan review, where you go a little bit further than zoning, but not quite to a full site development plan. And that it's essentially a concept with buy-in and that the concept is morphed to work for that particular property. The further sections in the ordinance talk about the dimensional requirements and the ability for the planning board to set those, again noting that that is something that is allowed. Character of development in the abutting neighborhoods. Again, this, I think Counselor Flaherty stated it well, there's a lot of different character in this area. We have the character of Greenwich Street. We have 93 on one side. We have the character of the mall itself and the abutting office buildings. And then we also have the character, I described it as the educational residential area, I want to call it Lakeside School as well, of the Flaherty School. One of the additional sections is the degree of open space and the proposed quality of the open space. And again, that is just far, far deficient to put forward an open space use and to have such a small amount of that actually proposed. The percentage of lot coverage is the next item in the ordinance. Just noting again, the lot coverage proposed here by the applicant is 70%. The underlying zoning district is 75%. So that is something that is in line with the under- district is 75%. So that, that is something that is in line with the underlying zoning. Again, noting that open space is a use, so that's something that would, that would look to be far less, given that that is the second use. Then again, asks, talks about the amount of affordable housing, previously noted that that is deficient. And then, if I may, Madam Chair, I would just like to read the overall staff analysis. And then again, this is available online for those that would like to read the entire report. "The planning staff is very familiar with the South Shore Plaza, the property and surrounding area. This property and the South Shore Plaza in its entirety are viewed as a prime opportunity for planning and visioning. Given the history of the property in the South Shore Plaza," excuse me, "given the history of the property, the South Shore Plaza has been encouraged to do just that, to undertake planning and visioning in the arena of trends we see all over the country in retail and service areas. Opportunities for improvement in diversification of uses, building form, facades, hardscape, architecture, landscape, circulation, massing, parking, and open spaces all exist at this location. Yet what we have presented is limited to 7% of the property. The RG PUD is more of what we would like to see changed. Large buildings, limited open space, and limited integration with the surrounding areas. To visualize 495 units in two buildings is overwhelming. There are no buildings in Braintree with 180 residential units and 315, and a 315, I had a typo there, I wrote 31, and a 315 residential unit structure is not in line with residential development in suburban locations outside of dense urban areas. Several retail centers in Massachusetts contain residential uses as presented in the RG PUD. The clear distinction between the desirable centers and the current proposal is community support, a long-term, excuse me, a clear long-term vision of the property, and a fairly robust redevelopment program. A variety of questions come to mind. What type of uses are going to be there? How will they present themselves visually? How will it be an improvement over the current conditions? How will open space, landscape, and hardscape be modernized and serve a purpose beyond meeting a zoning criteria? How will it take into account current mixed day, excuse me, current, current day mixed use, both vertically and horizontally? How will the uses be balanced to promote good circulation and minimize parking and traffic demands? How will these uses be diversified? As noted above in the staff report, is an analysis of the proposed RG PUD and the purpose of the Braintree zoning ordinance PUD. When evaluating a development, in this case, a PUD concept, we must first ensure the purpose of the ordinance is met. Based on the comments above, the planning staff is of the opinion that the purpose is not met. The planning staff recommends the planning board issue an unfavorable recommendation."
Great. Thank you. So as the director mentioned, this will be available online for people to review. Great. Thank you. I'm going to open it up to the board for questions, comments this evening. Any, any, any follow-up or questions? And I'm going to start to my right here with Member McCamey.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a point of clarification, I think somebody asked it. The planning board is just an endorsement board. We pass our endorsement, whether favorable or unfavorable, on to the mayor and the town council. They vote on it. In my opinion, this is a legislative action. That is not us. We review special permits as, for an example. So it rightly belongs to the mayor and the town council. So we're, what we're trying to do is find out some of the facts and obviously try to root out some of the non-facts and some more of the technical issues, because as you also heard, if this in some form or fashion gets passed, it will come back to the planning board as a special permit. And then we will be able to evaluate it on its technical merits. So having said that, my first question involves Simon. And I don't know if Mr. Marinelli's going to answer that, since we don't have any Simon representatives here, but, you know, forever, since they first owned the property in Braintree, they have been landlords. They've been, they've owned the land and they've rented it out to tenants. And my understanding is that there's, if this project moves forward, they would sell this property to the developer. So I don't know if you want to answer that, Mr. Marinelli, or someone. Thank you, sir.
Jim Dunlop with ZOM Living. So the, the relationship is, is just that. We're under contract to purchase the land. So at the end of the day, we, we would own the land and the property and, and develop it at arm's length from, from Simon.
Okay. And this might be an unfair question, but why is Simon, after all these years, changing their strategy? Why do they want to now be a seller of real estate rather than a landlord?
I don't, I don't know anything about their past strategy. I know a little bit about their current strategy around the country with residential groups. And sometimes they, they partner and do things together, and sometimes they sell to the right group. I think it maybe has something to do with quality and trust, but, you know, I, I can't answer for Simon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, just through Mr. Marinelli, I'd like to know why they're doing this. Have you done any, have you partnered with Simon on any other projects around the country?
No, we've looked at several, and we are partnering with a different mall owner in another location down in the DC area for a similar, a similar arrangement, residential on parking adjacent to their mall, or on mall properties.
Okay.
It's a very common development going on across the country at a lot of large regional malls that need to reinvent themselves and add mixed uses to the property to, to move things forward on the, on the retail side.
Okay. So that's what we figured. And then from your standpoint, you think it's more important to be the owner of the real estate?
Yes.
In your strategy?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And, and from our standpoint, locating residential adjacent to a regional mall of this size is, is ideal. So that, to answer your, your question, that's why we're here, because it makes sense.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Sure.
I, I think it's still an outstanding question. I'm just going to just say it to the director, you know, why is Simon doing, just, just to confirm. I, I'm sure that what Mr. Dunlop said makes sense. Okay. My second comment is, I believe on the website, there were, there were many questions tonight about the economic impact. Is that economic impact analysis on the website?
Yes, it is, Member McCamey.
Okay.
The original one and the revised one, or amended one.
All right. I, I just point out to the audience that there is a independent fiscal impact analysis which was done, and it lays out the impact to us from a cost and revenue standpoint. And I will say that from my looking at it, it, the net effect, there were several people here who mentioned that we would technically have an improvement of about $800,000 in annual cash flow. And that includes all the expenses related to police, fire, school, and water and sewer. So all those costs are taken into account, and you still have a net impact. But what I'd like to ask the applicant is, while it shows a positive $800,000, what is the negative impact from real estate taxes from Simon subtracted from this, shouldn't it?
We can't do that analysis. I think there, there is, you know, change to their, to the taxes from that parcel. It's, it's parking in two homes. But you are accurate. I don't think that was in that analysis.
No.
So we can, we can amend that.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And as rightfully points, points out, you know, Braintree does have a revenue problem at the moment. That's something that, it's, it's not for this, it's not for me or the board to say, but I would just say as a resident, it's something that we should all be concerned about. Where, where's the money going to come from? And I'm not, this is certainly not a savior, but we need to think about that. Another question I have, which is directed back to the applicant, is if you have heard from the mayor, the town council, clearly from the residents tonight, maybe less so from the planning board, if you have heard that this project is too large, and that the first step in the process is to try to get this new zoning district done, why would it make sense for us to say, well, we know what's coming, why should I vote for this zoning change?
Well, I
Given, given the fact that you really haven't considered reducing the size of the project at all?
I think, I think I've heard a lot from the community since we submitted. And in the submission, I would say, is in character for the uses that are being proposed. Multi-family of a 300-unit size in a five-story wood frame building, active adult, age restricted in a five-story building at 175, 180 units is all, is all in character to their uses. And, and, you know, that being said, I am hearing, and now I'm hearing from the director's staff report as well, some detail. So I am, you know, willing and prepared to work on those concerns. Those major concerns that I'm hearing are the density, as you're suggesting, and, and the, the relationship of Simon and the mall property and, and the site.
Right.
Physical, physical relations.
I'd include the buffer on that as well, you know, but certainly the density, size, et cetera. So, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure. Yep.
Yeah. That's all I have for now, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Member McCamey. Member Crowha, any comments, questions?
Yes, thank you. Since Member McCamey went over a little bit of the zoning process, I think I'll just start there. We are a board that takes a look at a proposal and then makes a recommendation. And we've heard from a lot of citizens with what their concerns are, many of which are very legitimate. I've also had a lot of one-on-one and small group conversations since this application was filed with friends and neighbors in the community. And I've, there's a range. There's many who are opposed. There are some who are in favor. But the vast majority of the people I've talked to still have a lot of questions, and those questions relate to legitimate concerns that were raised. And I've heard the applicant say that they are willing to relook at their plans and address some of those concerns. The, the purposes of the PUD were talked about, and there does need to be a collaboration with residential and commercial, and to really understand what the effect of any housing that goes in on what is currently the Simon Mall property would affect both the commercial uses in the mall, would affect the offices, would affect the economics of Braintree as a whole with respect to the businesses that make up part of the community. And then, second to that, is the economics of the town of Braintree's budgets. But considering when we look at that, is what is the impact on the residents, both who are there, both who are further away, and which of those impacts can be mitigated, which cannot, and, and what are we going to do once we understand those facts? There's a lot of facts that are out there. I would support having an opportunity to continue those discussions. I think there's, there's a couple of key points that I've heard, both based on what's been comments presented tonight, based on my review of the, the project. I think we need to understand what the five stories mean. What is the actual feet over base elevation, and how does that affect Flaherty School and the Lakeside Drive? What do those sightlines look like? What are the viewpoints from the houses, and what are we looking at with respect to that? I think we need to look at if there's a different height than the five stories, what does that mean, and, and does that resolve the concerns, or does it not, and go from that point. Traffic, we've heard a lot of concerns about. I did note, just looking at the traffic reports that are on the agenda tonight, that it appears to me that the traffic, daily traffic counts for this 500-unit project are quite similar to the Chick-fil-A traffic counts. And I think that we need to think about what traffic means to Braintree, and what is the upside, and where are people going. I, I do agree from some of the comments that were raised, and in my review of the traffic report, it seems likely that there's a lot more people who are going to be using Common Street than what's been accommodated in the initial traffic report. And I think that we need to understand what that looks like, and whether there's mitigation that can take place on the Simon property with respect to traffic controls to make, to help encourage people to use Granite Street if this housing goes through in some form or fashion in that location. There's been concerns with Lakeside Drive and the gate that's there. My understanding is that, that the gate will remain, of course, but it will be a fire access, so it can't be completely blocked off. I think that there needs to be some understanding of what it means with respect to that nearby location and the apartments if they go forward. Is there a way to control drop-offs, Uber Eats, deliveries, what have you, whether there's a method of doing that that could make sense? Construction impacts, infrastructure, crime, school impacts, all of those things are very important concerns. But I do think that we are looking at budget issues in town. I have two elementary kids. I am following closely what is happening. We're at a, we're at a great time to be looking at this because we are going through a master plan process, and we are considering what Braintree is interested in doing and not interested in doing to remain the vibrant community that we are. My kids were in private school for two years, just moved back to Braintree Public this year, and could not be happier with the teachers that we have and the school system that we have. And I've got 10 years left of, until high school, and I would like to see that remain. And I think that we need to take a strong look at what makes sense, what the impacts are, and how we go forward with that. There are certain aspects of this proposal that could potentially be used for some of the MBTA guidelines that are out there. There is a provision in those guidelines that allow a bus station to be used as a major transit location in certain circumstances. And I would like that to be considered if we continue looking at that, at the project, which would also require some upgrades on Simon property to the bus station that's there. The vision statement talks about collaborative engagement with the residents and taking a look at economic proposals. We've heard from a lot of residences, and I would support continuing this out, possibly even until April, and support some small group conversations with Flaherty School, with community, and, and see if there's a version of this project that makes sense for the town. And once we understand that, whether that version also makes sense for the proposed developer. But I think that we owe it to ourselves as a town to take a, take a closer look at the project before saying no outright. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Crowha. Member Kent, do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah, it just seems in, in listening to the entire meeting and the people that spoke, an awful lot of good points have been brought up about the relevance or the contradictory bylaws, and we've got to get that straightened out. It's the biggest project proposed in this town, certainly in the 40 years that I've lived here. We've got to take our time. We've got to get second opinions, third opinions, consider all the issues, the indirect, the indirect, the ancillary, and if there was ever a situation where the term "measure twice, cut once" applies, I think this is it. We can't afford to get it wrong. Just looking through this, for example, just looking through this fiscal impact analysis, 180 units of active adults, apartments, many of which would be occupied by people who sold their homes in Braintree. The analysis says there's going to be 27 kids going to the schools incrementally based on this, this development. But the 180 units that get sold are two, three, four-bedroom units. That's 360 to 500 bedrooms. That's 360 to 500 kids, and that's a little more than 22. 360 kids would require approximately 20 teachers. At 50,000 a teacher, that's a million. There goes the savings. That's all I got for now.
Thank you very much. Member Grove, any comments, questions?
Yes, ma'am. Well, listen, there's no prohibition against a reapplication, is there?
There is not.
Okay.
Member Grove.
Given the negative impact that the director saw Given the negative impact that the director saw in her recommendations, and giving the general complexity of this, and the need for a lot of assessment, my personal feeling is the building is too high, it's too big, and I don't like its location up against Flaherty. Having said that, I would support a motion to forward an unfavorable recommendation to give the applicant motivation to really dig at what they need to do.
Member Connolly, any comments, questions?
Yes, thank you. The Plaza presents Braintree with an important opportunity for redevelopment, and this requires consideration of the full campus. We've seen this type of planning in neighboring communities make all the difference, and Simon Properties and their affiliates need to take accountability, join the community process, and create a well-considered path forward for the entire parcel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have, I don't have a lot of extra commentary, but I do have a question for Attorney Marinelli or the applicant, if they'd like to come forward. And it's kind of along the lines, I think, of what some of the other members have touched upon, and kind of thinking about the process. I think we know there's no magic project that's going to pull us out of the fiscal challenges we're facing over the coming years. I think we have a lot of work to do. So, is it reasonable to think, you know, given the conversation this evening, hearing from a lot of our community members, seeing a lot of the raised hands, and, you know, a very much collective view on the current proposal, the current state of what we're looking at, staff comments, some board comments, district council comments, is it reasonable to think that you would take time to come back with a revision to the PUD and the project in general, you know, between tonight and a future meeting? Is there room for any sort of revisions to the project? I know that's probably something you can't speak to quite specifically, but is there the thought that you would potentially want to present a revised project or something for us to consider? Or are we looking at considering the specific project presented this evening?
I think that Jim mentioned that he would consider the density, the collaboration with Simon. We just got the staff report on Monday at 3:00. So, you know, we don't have any issue with continuing to April so that we can consider everything that's been presented. And I'll let Jim speak to that, to your specific question.
I don't think I would change anything Frank just said, just to hear it in my voice. That is what I meant, that we've heard a lot in the last couple of weeks that we hadn't heard before, and, you know, we definitely want to consider those, all those points, and work on it, and see if we can't come to, you know, something that works for everybody. That's the point.
Okay.
It's not an all-or-nothing project.
Okay.
This is it, or nothing. It's, yeah.
Okay. I think, given that aspect of that, we could look to, as Member Grove, I think, had mentioned just now, make a recommendation on this specific project, or we could wait, allow them time to revise it, come back to us and wait on our recommendation. I'll leave that up to the board to consider what they would like to do, but I wanted to, you know, hear about whether or not we could potentially see changes before making a motion on what our recommendation would be.
Madam Chairman?
Yep.
If we give an unfavorable recommendation, then they have to bring the revised project back and present it to the councilors first. If we just, you know, continue things out, we're going to be the only ones that see it.
I guess just a point of clarification, whatever they would bring to us would be part of the recommendation that we make to town council. Town council would still see whatever revisions, I guess, process question.
Everything is, if I may, this is an actual town council application. So, everything is filed with the council, and then they just give it to me to do the review. So, if there were going to be any revisions or new plans, that all has to go through the council, and it would be given to us to look at further.
Generally, when you get a staff review, and it's just less than 48 hours, or, you know, we've only had a business day, a continuance is pretty fundamental. I would respectfully suggest that the marijuana was continued for a number of months, the inclusionary zoning was continued for a number of months. So, we want to, Jim has said that he wants to just cogitate all of this and put it together, synthesize it. It would seem to me that fairness and reasonableness just dictates that, you know, we'd be given the opportunity to do that and come back in April, if not before, and let people know what, if anything, we can do.
Okay. What would be the meeting dates? What's the March meeting date and the April meeting date?
Sorry, I was having a snack. Tuesday, March 14th, and Tuesday, April 11th.
I think, just given the extent of work I feel like needs to be sorted through, that April may be a more realistic timeframe. If we were to vote to continue this this evening, would that be agreeable in April?
For sure, for sure.
Recommendation to the town council on this?
Okay, so we do have a motion by Member Grove. In order to vote on that motion, we would need a second. If anybody wants to second that, if we don't have a second, we would need to entertain another motion. So, we have a motion by Member Grove to deny this application, and do we have a second?
Could we clarify again the difference, differentiation?
I believe if we outright deny the project, they would have to refile with council for whatever revision. It would, no? Oh, sorry.
It's not a denial. So, the word denial and approval is not in this. It's favorable and unfavorable. The board could also choose to send no recommendation. We would send our recommendation, if it was unfavorable, to the council, and the council will hear either what was in front of the planning board this evening, or Attorney Marinelli would have an opportunity to amend his proposal and present that to the council.
So, structurally, what it comes down to is making sure that the council gets in on any changes to the plan.
I'm pretty sure they're tuned in to the plan, even though it hasn't been presented to them. I don't want to speak for them, and I'm pretty sure they're following what's going along very closely.
From our perspective, the motion to continue to April is pretty simple, and it gives us an opportunity to, in all fairness, consider what's been stated tonight and the input that's been received.
So, we still do have a motion on the table for...
Do we have a second?
I think it was a point of clarification, but was it a second, Member Kent?
It was a point of clarification.
Point of clarification. So, I don't believe we have a second. If somebody else would like to make a motion...
I'll make a motion to continue to the April 11th date.
We do have a motion to continue to the April 11th date. Would we have a second on that motion?
Second.
So, we have a motion to continue to April. The public hearing would remain open. This would still be a very similar format at that meeting. We have a second by Member McCamey to continue it. We will now take a vote of that. All those in favor, maybe just raise your hand for the record in case. All those in favor, aye. All those opposed, Member Grove and Member Kent, Member Connolly, as our alternate members, so she would not technically be voting on that. All right, so the process for this is that it will be continued to April 11th. That will be the next public hearing to see revised plans and to hear what changes have been made to accommodate the commentary at this evening's meeting. So, hopefully we'll see many of you in April. 11th at 7:15. We'll just take a brief moment to, I think we do have members of the public leaving. We have more on the agenda, so hopefully we can get this sorted.
I think because we live in that area, we're all too, the law promises that this is our, we're more so.
have an actually pretty full agenda to get through, so if we could just kind of get back into place in the next two minutes, at 10:10, we are going to get up and going on our next hearing. 10:10. That's lucky, right?
Okay, so now we go from the fire into the smoke?
We are going to, before the applicant introduces themselves and the project, open the public hearing by reading into the record the public notice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Notice is given by the planning board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Braintree Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 135, Articles 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 14, that a public hearing will be conducted on Wednesday, February 15th, 2023, at 7:15 PM in Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider a special permit floodplain and site plan review application filed by Torrington Properties Incorporated and JBM Braintree LLC. The applicant's project involves a redevelopment of the existing site to construct a 2,500 square foot retail building with drive-through services and a 5,225 square foot fast food establishment with drive-through services. The project also involves disturbance within the 100-year floodplain zone AE with improvements to the site's landscaping, lighting, utilities, parking, and other off-site improvements. The property is located at 125 Union Street. It's a own highway business district with portions of the site in the 100-year floodplain zone AE and is shown on the Braintree Assesses map 1,003 as Plot 3 with a land area of 2.07 acres.
Thank you, Attorney Marinelli.
Yes, good evening. Frank Marinelli, pleased to appear on behalf of Torrington Properties. With me is Pete Doucette, who is the Development Director of Torrington. Also here is Joe Fonseca, who is our civil engineer from Bowler Engineering. The property in question is just over two acres, as the board is aware. It's the former Motel 6 site. It has been an eyesore and a blemish to the town for a number of years. The Bickford's Restaurant is gone. The hotel is long gone. There's over 40, about 45,000 square feet of building mass on the property. And Torrington, who owns 80 properties, a portfolio of about $500 million, and a premier regional developer of properties. Torrington has filed the plans to demolish the existing buildings. And some of the asbestos has already occurred, the removal to the benefit of the town. And what we are going to do once the buildings are removed, the site will have increased open space. Currently, the open space is non-conforming. The lot coverage is non-conforming. You can see the zoning table up there on compliance and non-compliance. So there are benefits all round. We are bringing into conformance the open space at 25%. We're reducing the lot coverage to 75% below its current. We went to the zoning board for the Chick-fil-A building so that they could have the covers on the drive-through lanes. And those canopies were approved by the zoning board. That decision has been filed and the appeal period has run and that decision has been recorded. The canopies are actually further back on either side than the restaurant was and also the motels on the southerly side. So that is where the current permitting stands. We're before the planning board for site plan review on two uses by right. The restaurant, fast food, the Chick-fil-A is a 5,225 square foot building. And the bank building, the Brookline Bank, is also a used by right at the westerly end of the site. And that's a 2,500 square foot building. So you have two buildings that total less than 8,000 square feet, where previously you had over 40,000 square feet of building mass. Now you have 20%, approximately 20% of the development that you had previously. Plus, you have compliance, bringing into compliance with open space, bringing into compliance with lot coverage and the requirements of the highway business zone. The building, the Chick-fil-A building itself complies with the highway business zone setbacks. We only went for the variances so we could make a better project with the all-weather canopies that the zoning board granted approval for. So that's the site. Those are the requirements and the compliance in the highway business zone, the improvements. The landscape plan, which is a sheet that you should take a look at because it shows over 500 plantings are going to be added between trees, shrubs, grasses, perennials. So this will have a very generous landscape look to it. And credit to Torrington for developing this plan with this onsite plan. Offsite, we also have improvements that are referenced in the traffic report and also in Mr. Murphy's staff report. If you look at page 2 of the TIA and Mr. Murphy's report contains it, we have construction of new sidewalk along the project site. Union Street, Ivory Street frontage, including ADA compliant wheelchair ramps. We have modifications to the northbound Ivory Street approach to convert the northbound lane, left turn lane, to a shared left turn through lane in order to provide two exclusive right turns into Union Street eastbound. And that's all based on vehicle trips, which were monitored and determined by BAI. We have a provision for a new signalized pedestrian crossing of the northbound Ivory Street approach to provide connectivity between the project site and the MBTA station. Fourth, we have elimination of free northbound right turn from Ivory Street to Union Street eastbound with this movement operating under traffic signal control to accommodate the proposed pedestrian crossing and minimize conflicts. And fifth, we have installation of new pedestrian signal heads. We have sixth optimization of traffic signal timing at this location. So those offsite improvements alone are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. They will make for a better intersection. The onsite, we also have some floodplain where the Bickford's building was and where the new Chick-fil-A building will be. And as is pointed out in Bowler's, Joe Fonseca's engineering report, which is dated December 20th, and it addresses the floodplain and concludes that the proposed site modifications will result in an increase in onsite floodplain storage. The stormwater management system will reduce the impact of the wet, to the wetlands by providing for underground detention and infiltration as well as water quality improvements through water quality units, deep sump, hooded catch basins, and a reduction in impervious surface. So overall, great improvements to a blighted site that has been a long time coming for the town and great improvements also to the offsite intersection with respect to traffic and the Chick-fil-A tendency for the building, for the fast food restaurant building. Just for clarification, because somebody wanted me to present a menu for Chick-fil-A last time at the zoning board, I don't represent Chick-fil-A. I represent the owner of the site, Torrington. My son and I go to Chick-fil-A quite a bit in Hanover. It's a great product, but I don't represent Chick-fil-A. But I did print out the menu from Hanover if that gentleman wants it tonight, even though this is not an episode of Celebrity Chef or so forth. But so that's the zoning, that's the zoning aspects to the site and to the offsite. On the important issue of traffic, we are working cooperatively with the town and its peer reviewer. We filed the traffic impact assessment in November. We had a peer review from Greg Lucas at Ty &amp; Bond in December. And we are in the process right now of responding to that peer review. So that's where that stands. And we do have a summary from Sean Kelly, who is unable to be here due to illness tonight. But Sean did provide an update on the traffic summary. And as I said, we had the initial TIA in response to peer review comments. And, you know, we've got counts, we've got all of that coordination going on. And we'll be reporting back to the board at the next meeting and hopefully have already had by the next meeting an opportunity to get the response to Greg Lucas, the peer reviewer, and have him also give further input to the board. So thank you. We're happy to answer any questions. And if Pete or Joe want to add anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Marinelli. As we usually do, we have on the back of our agenda a time for public comment. And there's certainly not as many publics still here this evening. But I do want to note for those in attendance that this is a public hearing. If anybody is here who wishes to comment or ask questions, now would be a great time to come up and provide commentary. I don't know if anybody would like to, but come on up. And we'll take as much comment. I don't think we'll fill an hour, but we will take some comment. And then I will bounce it back to staff for their report and board comments. So thank you for coming tonight.
First, I'd like to say, excuse me, I just thank you for all your time. I know this meeting, it's run long, so I'll be brief. I was the gentleman who pointed out that the gentleman behind me didn't know what was on the menu. If you're going to stand in front of a town and especially a board and tell them what a, you know, great thing this is for the town, you should at least know what the product is. But that aside, this is just a terrible place for it. It's literally yards from a major rotary, the biggest in Braintree, and from an on-ramp to the expressway. I've lived in this town all my life. And with Amazon Fresh someday probably going to open and the tea, it's just, it's going to be a crazy amount of traffic. We don't need a study. If you drive the roads of Braintree every day, you know that a drive-through of that size just isn't what that area needs. Second, all you need to do is Google Chick-fil-A and traffic. And we can learn from the nightmares from the other, from the West Coast to down in Charlotte. They've now had to, they've been such bad neighbors that they have to actually go and file a public nuisance in order to get them to work with them. So anything you forward, I just hope that you really consider the traffic. That's all. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you so much.
Sean, my name's Robert Durigan. I'm a lifelong resident. I live at 31 Tottness Road in Braintree. Thanks again for all your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Tuffy, 7 Prescott Lane. I just have a question. Maybe if you could show the picture again. So I live in the Landing. And back in the day when Bickford's was still open, you would drive up through the rotary, get to that intersection, and then bang a U-turn to get into the Bickford's lot. Now, I've heard that you're going to be able to take a right turn on Ivory Street if you're northbound. But what about the folks that are coming from East Braintree? You're going to take a left onto Ivory and then a left into the parking lot? Is that, how are you going to get into that line for Chick-fil-A?
We can actually have the applicant describe access, if that would be all right. I think that would be appropriate if you just want to come up and review the access.
Yeah, sure.
If you have a follow-up question, you can stay there while I answer.
Okay. Pete Doucette with Torrington Properties. So yeah, the access from the rotary will still be a U-turn. And you can see on that plan, I don't know if we have the other one, Joey, that shows some of the work, but the island that's there now, it's going to be pulled back. It's going to create more room to make the U-turn. And there'll be some stop control added on the right turn from Ivory that eliminates that. All this will be in the response that goes to Greg. I think, you know, we spent the last eight weeks on the traffic. It was a, the peer review expanded the study to, I think, maybe five or six more intersections around. So it took a lot of time to go out and record all that data, put it all together. We've also been in contact with the DOT, District 6, and we're preparing a memo to them that, you know, gets their response on the fact that we're staying below the threshold that would involve any type of permits with them as well as eliminate any MIPA involvement. So but the traffic, it will be a U-turn.
So looking at that island in the center of Union, you're going to pull that island back?
So I, yeah, sure.
If you could just steal maybe Member Kent's microphone while you're talking? I don't know if it'll reach, or you can just reach over.
So I was referring to the island right here. This is going to stay as is. This lane will continue that way. This lane, you'll be able to make a U-turn or stay left. Right now, there's a concrete island in this area that's going to get removed. This island will get pulled back. And this will become striping with a crosswalk and a stoplight here. So it will be a U-turn.
It's going to be, you still need to bang a U-turn there. Okay.
You do.
Thank you.
We.
Thank you. Yep, come on up.
My name's Gavin Williams. Just clarification, I'm a Weatham resident. Does that matter?
You can speak here.
Thanks.
Just let us know where you're from.
Gavin Williams, 12 Arlington Street in Weatham. Sorry, I couldn't see it clearly back there. I was more worried about like getting out of this lot. I'm just thinking, I drive by Chick-fil-A in Hanover all the time. It seems like much of it is drive-through traffic that goes through there. But this one's a little bit different with the combination of the bank. And it seems like this is emphasizing a lot more parking in and not necessarily drive-through, which seems to be the emphasis in Hanover. I was worried just about people getting out of here and how much of a clog that would be. I did not see from back there that you could get out from both ways. I thought it was just sort of going, sort of reverse circle, counterclockwise. But just, I guess now being up on the stage, just to ask about getting out of here and is there just going to be a huge jumble of traffic at that entrance? Again, I see it, how busy Chick-fil-A's are. I would like the Chick-fil-A, but I do see how busy it is combined with a bank. I see like Hanover where the Starbucks is, it goes right onto 53 a lot. And to take the turn across the median is tough and pretty dangerous. Just overall about the traffic that occurs within that parking lot and getting, especially getting out of there.
The town reviewing this. So it's entrance here, exit only, right out only. And this is set up for basically about a 60-car stack in the drive-through to the back of the bank. The bank has its own drive-through there, so they're separated. So, you know, everybody that comes through, they'll exit right there. That is the only exit. It's a right turn and you exit back to the rotary.
And you don't think, I don't know if you're like a traffic expert, there's not too much of a jumble there where you can come in and go out? And then how there's a two sort of lanes that come together at that exit? It's not too much?
I mean, based on the site traffic, we feel that there's adequate room here for the cars to build. This will be, you know, staff parking. But based on the way that they serve their food, there should be plenty of time for these cars to get out. If there's a light, they'll obviously have to wait a minute.
Yeah.
But that traffic will only affect what's happening on our site. It's not going to affect what's happening on the public way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think you're popular right there. Maybe another follow-up question, so. All right, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Susan Gardner, 29 Morrison Road, Braintree. So, okay, if you're coming from the train station and you're heading towards the rotary, when the traffic gets the light and the two lanes come up Ivy, yeah.
Dog in here.
Then the one lane that goes, yeah, right there. So is that just going to stay one lane? Because then you have one lane? Because then you have to get, you got to jump over to like to the barrier if you're not going to go on the highway. Because with the way the rotary got reconstructed, it's now, if you're in the right lane, you go on to the highway, and then you have to get over to the, and there's a lot of people that are in the right lane, and at the last minute, they're cutting you off.
Yeah, our study is, based on this, needs to become two lanes. So, it's actually going to be two right turns.
Oh, it's going to come two.
Correct.
Okay.
And so, what's there now is three lanes. You have a left-turn lane, a straight-through lane, and a right-turn lane.
Right.
And these two are going to become right-turn lanes. This is going to become a combination left and straight.
And straight.
This is the movement that's got the least amount of traffic.
Okay, so it's going to give an extra lane going to the right.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Bruce Parks, Milton Road. Just, I'm not a traffic expert, but I drive that way quite often, and I don't want to question the traffic studies, but you're coming, if you're coming down Route 3 South, getting off at the Union Street exit, and you're going to be taking a right, yep, so you're going to be coming down here. And if I want to stop there on the way home, and I live in South Braintree, if I want to go home, I have to bang a U-turn. And now, you're going to be having two lanes there, so I'm going to have to cross over two lanes of traffic to get in to take an immediate right. That sounds like a safety issue. The other thing is, right now, 5:00 at night, that can be backed up, it's past Daddy, not Daddy, is it Daddy's Dairy? Whatever it is, to get over in the left lane. Are you putting two left lanes at that intersection for left turn?
There's currently two there now.
For left?
Yes.
So, okay. All right.
Yeah, and all these points that the peer reviewer brought up, that we're working through, but to mitigate, you have to cross over two lanes of moving traffic, we're adding stop control, so that when this is a left turn, there's going to be some degree that the people have to stop, but on all the other movements, they'll be free.
So, they won't be able to take a right turn on red there?
Well, it's, we haven't finalized all of that yet. We know that we can't stop them there full-time, but to some degree, when there's a U-turn, the cars have to stop.
Okay.
Right now, it's a yield sign, so the cars are just going through. We've talked about this, and I don't know that we've officially...
And then the other, the other point that she made, when they reconstructed the Union Street, almost immediately, when you take that right to go past the property, you have to get over in the left lane if you're not going Route 3 South. So, coming out of Chick-fil-A, you're going to have to cross over a solid white line in order to get over left, or you're going to have to merge to the right, but then, as the woman said, jump over in front of the people that are going to go northbound on Route 3 or East Braintree versus being forced to go to the right to Route 3 South. Am I making sense?
Yeah, I mean, right now, these cars, I would imagine they're going to have, unless they're jumping across all the lanes right here, they're probably making a left turn into that left-turn lane.
So, where, coming out of Chick-fil-A, where are you going to be entering the lane to go to Route 3 North?
Well, you're going to have to cross that traffic to get in.
Even though it's a solid white line?
That may have to be restripped as part of the work.
So, I guess that's what I wanted to hear. Is that going to be...
We haven't finished having all that communication with Melissa and Ty and Bond.
Okay.
Thank you very much. The public comment period will be open this evening if you want to come up. We're going to keep moving through the information and the staff report, and I, Councilor Berica, I think, has some comments this evening, so please.
Thank you. Thank you very much, members of the planning board, and thanks for sticking it out tonight. My name's Meredith Berica. I am the District Five Town Counselor and the council president, and this is in the heart of District Five. So, I'd like to start by saying the revitalization and redevelopment of this property has been a priority for years, and it is both important and very welcome. And I know Torrington has already done a lot to clean up the site. I also want to acknowledge that this, that fast food and a bank are uses allowed by right under our current zoning code. So, now, we have an opportunity to make this the best possible project for Braintree. And in order to do that, I'd like to bring to your attention some very specific District Five concerns. First, let's start with traffic. I won't rehash the very thorough peer review, which I know is being taken into serious consideration, and traffic is an inevitable trade-off of redevelopment and new growth. But I do want to shed some light on some specific District Five concerns again. First, the peer reviewer recommended an expanded traffic study, including, among other intersections, Ivory and Pearl Streets. Ivory and Pearl is a documented mass DOT crash cluster. This means it is in the top 5% for automobile crashes in both the town and the mass DOT regional planning area. If the expanded traffic study reveals a detrimental impact to Ivory and Pearl, then I believe it is fair to ask for mitigation in the form of funding to help upgrade this dangerous intersection. Second, the proposed concurrent pedestrian crossing, which allows both cars and pedestrians to cross through an intersection simultaneously. The experience in South Braintree Square, where concurrent crossing was introduced in November of 2020, provides evidence that this crossing configuration is dangerous to pedestrians. Indeed, last April, a wheelchair user was struck in the crosswalk while she had the right of way. The council's Public Safety Committee, in cooperation with the town engineer, has asked that this signal phasing be reevaluated due to the ongoing pedestrian safety concerns. Union Street intersection is much busier than South Braintree Square, and concurrent phasing prioritizes cars over pedestrians. Both of these examples present us with an opportunity to use this long-awaited redevelopment project to lean into some of the aspirations as drafted in our master plan community vision: to upgrade roadway corridors and transportation infrastructure to improve the safety for all users, and prioritize pedestrian access, and produce better connectivity between the two sides of the highway to help people get safely around town and the region. Here is our chance to begin to recognize that vision. Next, I'd like to talk about the environment. This is a business whose profits are based on emissions generating vehicles, which will be driving through and around an area of town that is a mapped heat island and a state-designated environmental justice zone. The heat island effect will be compounded by more vehicles idling at the drive-through and around the intersection. But here, another opportunity presents itself. To significantly improve this gateway location and the local environment, I urge the planning board to consider approving only the number of parking spaces required by zoning. Rather than accept the current proposal, which calls for 18 more spaces than required, instead, use those spaces to plant carbon-reducing shade trees as a condition of approval. Private developers know the benefits of Braintree: an ideal location, municipal utilities, and well-informed and engaged residents. As we seek to enhance community vitality and promote a high quality of life, Braintree residents also deserve to equally benefit from new development. Reasonable mitigation, like intersection improvements and tree planting, serves the best interest of new development and the residents, and should be the assumed starting place. I urge this board to ask for more of this, for more from this developer, so we can make this project the absolute best it can be for District Five and Braintree. Thank you so much for listening and taking these comments under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Connor, are you the staff report reviewer? All right, Assistant Director Murphy is going to review the staff report for us. I guess just highlight major concerns.
If I could kindly ask, our peer review consultant is in the audience. Would the board prefer they go first?
I think just give an overview of that, unless you feel, it's up to you.
I don't mind going over it. Thank you, Madam Chair. We've been working with the applicant for a couple of months now prior to their filing. They did issue the TIA in November of 2022. The peer review consultant, Greg Lucas, Ty and Bond, who is here present tonight, will go over the traffic. The applicant's proposing to demolish the existing structures on-site and redevelop the proposed structures as depicted on the plan set. Staff has reviewed the application as it relates to the site plan review criteria, in addition to the special permit analysis for disturbance within the floodplain. Staff, in reviewing the site plan review analysis, there are several concerns made by staff as referenced within the staff report. Those have been provided to the applicant. Staff is requesting that the applicant either demonstrate compliance or satisfy concerns as raised. In addition to that, I'm sure this board knows, back in December, we provided a positive recommendation on new floodplain bylaw that was approved by town council just last week, I believe. We are requesting that the applicant revise the floodplain analysis to meet the new portion of the bylaw. In addition to that, tonight, staff is recommending two things. We are recommending that the state's proposed stormwater management system be peer-reviewed. The applicant shall submit a check in the amount of $5,000 to the Department of Planning and Community Development for the cost of the peer review services. We will embark on requesting a peer review consultant tomorrow and provide that notice to the applicant's attorney as well. There is still a lot of work to be done with this proposal. There are numerous concerns with the site access, its traffic. Staff itself offers concerns that fire apparatus may not be able to circulate throughout the site during a catastrophe. In addition to that, staff recommends that we continue this to the March 13th meeting in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. And we do have our peer consultant here for the traffic review. We do have a letter, and if it would be all right, if you could come up and just kind of, just introduce yourself, what you looked at, your overall, if there are any specifics you'd like us to, you know, to point out more, just with a closer eye. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair, first, members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Greg Lucas. I'm a traffic engineer and a senior project manager with Ty and Bond. We conducted a preliminary, what I'm calling a preliminary review, because the initial study, when it was issued, we had a meeting with the director and assistant director and the applicant team, including their traffic engineer, Sean Kelly, from Van Assen Associates, and talked about, at a high level, some of the concerns of this site, some of the things that others have brought up, specifically how people are getting in and out of the site, the impact on that intersection at Union and Ivory, and just the general operation of the site, some of the trip generation characteristics that they had included in the report, which included an evaluation of other Chick-fil-A sites, recognizing that what we would typically use for standard industry data doesn't work for this site. Chick-fil-A has a higher demand, and so they appropriately looked at similar Chick-fil-A sites in the region. And so, as was mentioned, we asked for an expansion of the study to include study of other intersections, including the rotary, because all of the traffic exiting the site needs to use the rotary, whether they're getting back on Route 3, whether they're going to East Braintree, or even whether they're coming back in this direction, they need to turn right out of the site. They need to use the rotary to come back through this intersection. And then, excuse me, expanding out in each direction, another intersection, so going up Union to Washington, going down Ivory to the signalized intersection at the T Station and the Transfer Station, and then the signalized intersection at Ivory and Pearl. And so, because we had questions on some of the trip generation characteristics, some of the assumptions that were made, some of the intersection phasing, including the pedestrian phasing and control of that right turn, and an expansion of the study area and changes that would fundamentally change conclusions that were in that initial study, we didn't go in depth with that. And are expecting, as was mentioned, are expecting an updated study in response to these comments that then would also be reviewed with additional comments. With that, I'm happy to answer any specific questions on our report and our review to date.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm going to turn it over to the board now for comments. Member McComme, you can start us off.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like one of the residents who spoke before, I remember back in the day when Bickford's was there taking U-turns. Of course, that's with much less traffic. As one of the other residents mentioned, if you look up any articles on Chick-fil-A specifically, you can see that it's been a disaster in many communities in terms of, you mentioned, I read one recently about Charlotte, you know, traffic, they've had to take down units, so on and so forth. So, you know, when I look at this project, I'm happy, as the counselor said, we need to, you know, look at how we can redevelop this challenging piece of property. Maybe it's not, maybe it's not this type of usage, though. The traffic looks to me to be, I don't know, a disaster. Changing islands, U-turns, right near Union Street. Ivory Street is already a nightmare. You know, it's difficult to see. Combined with the fact that Chick-fil-A has the worst drive-through time of all fast-food restaurants in America, and that's per car on average, I want to say it's at least six minutes, if not more. So, I don't know how, you know, if we queued up X number of cars, it's, and that article was just in the Wall Street Journal, I'll bring it in next time. I'm challenged by this project. We need to do something, but I question whether this is the right project, given all the traffic challenges that our peer consultant just mentioned, given all these changes, given the nature of the vendor which may go in there. So, it's, you're going to have to really prove this one to me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member McComme. I do have a follow-up question before I move on to further comment, and I don't know, do you, did you want to follow up with anything Member McComme said? I guess...
Yeah, I think we had, first, on the other, on the fire apparatus, we did have a letter from the fire department, which was pretty benign. We do have a truck turning radius planned, so that's, this site is different than, for example, Hanover. This site is ideal in terms of its stacking capacity. It has over 60 cars that can be accommodated on this site. So, it is laid out properly. We understand the responses that have to be given to Greg Lucas and Ty and Bond, and Sean Kelly's going to work on that, but I wouldn't prejudge it based upon other experiences at other locations, because this is, this is a unique site in terms of their product, and it's got a 72-seat restaurant in terms of being a family restaurant with places to park, and we're going to work through the traffic. We're going to answer those things. It's well underway. So, Sean Kelly is sick.
What I'm saying, Mr. Marinelli, is that those experiences are the same at other Chick-fil-A's around the country.
I've been through...
Including some I've been to, and, you know, they've had, they have stacking and so on.
Yeah, I beg to differ. I've been through Hanover many times.
I'm not talking about Hanover. I'm talking across the country.
And it's never taken six minutes, but...
Well, the Wall Street, I'll bring it in next time, Wall Street Journal, worst drive-through franchisee in America. Okay? Public, it was in the Wall Street Journal. I'll bring it in.
Well, you know...
And that's on average.
Okay.
And I don't want these, I don't want these cars stacking up. I don't, you know, we rejected...
That's what we're working on.
I understand you're working on it.
This is part of a use by right.
But you're going to have to prove it to us, because I don't get this.
We have to prove everything. We prove everything. We understand. We do prove our cases, and it's a use by right, and where are we going to be if we start anecdotally saying that, you know, I don't think this is going to work based on a Wall Street Journal article or whatever. It's...
The Wall Street Journal article is about wait time.
We have begged for peer review.
And the wait time affects every other Chick-fil-A or fast-food restaurant around the country.
Okay.
They are the worst.
I just think that...
Number one, in the wrong category.
Well, I'm surprised at the predeterminations that have been made on a newspaper article. I'm surprised at the predeterminations that have been made on a newspaper article. I really am. I am, I only, I don't normally speak like this, but I am really surprised at the predetermination based upon...
I'm not predetermining anything, I'm giving you a fact.
Well, the fact is, it's a use by right.
But look it up. So what?
Well, you know, to try to, you know, trying to keep things on the right path in terms of what a zoning use by right is, and in terms of working through traffic, we've been asked to hire a peer reviewer, we did it, we paid for it, we're working through it, and, and, you know, I described properly where the, where that process stands, but there does seem to be something else at work in terms of prejudgments on traffic and so forth, and Chick-fil-A in general...
You're changing the whole roadway, and, and look at the pedestrian crossing.
We're investing probably $500,000 in reconfiguring.
You know, building a, it above the road, but now you're gonna, now you have this crosswalk there, people getting off the T, going across, you heard what the counselor said. I mean, it just seems like it's all compounding upon itself, that's all I'm saying.
Well, you know what?
I'm looking at the facts. I'm not prejudging anything.
Well, we deal, you know, we deal with facts, we deal with the law, and we deal with the fact that it's a use by right. Winston Flowers, you know, this gentleman keeps, you know, can you just be courteous, maybe?
Yeah, well, we're talking, so anyway...
Sorry.
You know, this gentleman keeps interrupting. But anyway, if Winston Flowers was gonna come, I think maybe he'd be happier with that, and it would be a use of right, but that's not the demand. So, an owner of property with property rights has to go with what the demand is. The demand in the marketplace is not for a flower shop, or a Westin Hotel, or something that might be higher grade in your, in your viewpoint. It's for, this is what the demand is, and it's a fast food restaurant, which is allowed.
And you know that, you know that what we have to do is take a look at, you know, things like traffic.
Nobody has ever said that you weren't.
One of the major intersections in Braintree, not just a major intersection, but several major intersections.
You know, I've been supportive of that. We have done a TIA, we have paid for a peer reviewer, we're doing a response to a peer reviewer. I saw, so that's, that's what I'm perplexed by.
Great, well, then bring it, and, and we have, I haven't prejudged anything. I am just bringing up some issues which, you know, in my time in this town, having experienced, as you know, Bickford's here, and now we have all this new development here, I'm just raising issues that I think pertain to me and the rest of the residents, and it's, it's traffic and the fact that you have a vendor coming in which has a poor track record.
I don't, I don't see that, but, you know, again, and I think that's...
I'm done, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I just kind of had a follow-up question. I do understand that this project is by right, and we are here for site plan review. Just a point of curiosity, in the master plan, we've talked a lot about, like, improving pedestrian connectivity across town with the, with Route 3 running through it, and this, the use and proposal before us strikes me just very much car-centric, and I'm curious if, in any considerations for redevelopment of the property, were there any other considerations, or were you kind of already targeting a use like this? If you don't feel comfortable answering that, that's also understandable, but I'm just kind of curious, from like a planning perspective, the property owner does have the rights to develop something by right, of course, but like, is, was there any consideration for anything else?
We had, we had meetings with the administration. The administration didn't want housing there. I mean, I think that this owner has been very accommodating in terms of, the request was go out and look for a use by right, we did. Even though it's perfect for Section 3A housing and so forth, the request was, we don't want housing there. It's, it's classic transit-oriented, maybe $100 million investment instead of the 10 or so that's going to occur, so those are the facts. So, you know, we, this, you know, and Pete can speak more to it as far as, you know, maybe your marketing questions about, you know, but they, Chick-fil-A was, was wanting a site like this, they, they responded, and Brookline Bank responded. It's a very modest, very modest development plan, considering that there's over 40,000 square feet of building mass there, and we're going to less than 8,000 square feet with 500 plantings that are shown on the landscape plan.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, that feedback. Member Crowell, comments, questions?
Just one sort of ancillary question. I will, I thought the peer reviewer did a good job with the traffic review, and I look forward to seeing the update on that. I think there are some questions. The TIA that I looked at, I thought it said that the property was being subdivided, is that the case, and could you explain what that?
So, I don't know where that was referenced, but...
I had it in my notes, I actually don't remember either.
So, I think it may have been looked at, but it's, you know, it's not something, to your point, you do have two different users, it's always ideal if you can create a new lot line and so forth, but that would be difficult with the requirements of setbacks under the highway business zone. So, that's not gonna happen, at, at least at this time. If it did, you would obviously have an A&R plan at some point.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. That's it.
Thank you. Member Kent, comments, questions?
Is there a dine-in option as well?
Yes. So... There's 72 seats, is it 72 feet? 72 seats, yeah.
Okay, so that would explain the, some of the parking, but there's probably, there's more parking spaces than was required, and...
And most times in retail settings, tenants want the parking, so we can discuss what leeway there may be. I know that two of the parking spaces on a revised plan are probably going to be utilized for Brookline Bank dumpster, so, you know, there will be a plan revision, but we'll take a look at that and see if, see if any of the parking, if there's any excess park, there's, there's excess spaces, as was pointed out, it's, I think, 56, and there's 70, 56 required, 74 provided, but we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, and to the, to the counselor's point, if there was fewer parking spaces and more plantings, that would be something to consider.
Yes, we'll put parking spaces in reserve before, when we can, green them over, and in most cases, I don't think we ever see them come back and be asphalted, but we'll see if it, what's available here.
Yep, okay.
Member Grove, any comments, questions? Member Connolly, any comments, questions?
Yes, thank you. I had a question about the bank and just the general security related there, if you could speak to that.
The security at the bank?
The security at the bank.
Pete, do you know anything about...
Uh, no.
My, Brookline Bank's been around a long time, I would imagine, they're state-of-the-art, but, I mean, in particular, are you talking about alarm systems, or...
Alarm systems, camera systems, if there would be guards posted there, or if they would have other plans.
I think we can get an answer on that, right? We'll get an answer on that. I think the regulators in banking probably require a certain threshold anyway, but we'll, we'll get an answer to that.
Okay. And then I had a question related to the traffic study for the peer review. The question I had was, the data in the initial study was Woburn, Dedham, and Salem were the locations that were comparative, but the demand there seems different, and the access to the highway is different, there's a secondary road that generally feeds to that. So I had a question as far as them as comparisons in the peer review, and then also, how do you consider Cape traffic within, within the, the traffic study? Because I think that this is sort of the gateway to the Cape, being in Braintree, and most people wouldn't be stopping in Braintree at this point en route to the Cape, and if there's any consideration of that or a possibility to consider it.
Okay. I'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
My concern is, is that people who are traveling from Boston and points north, coming this way to the Cape, wouldn't have been coming off, will now be coming off the highway, and from May to September, I avoid, like many of the neighbors do, Route 3, and now those roads that are giving us access around it may have traffic issues that'll present. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Connolly. I just have a couple comments, questions. I will echo some of the comments from fellow board members about the peer review on the traffic, and do appreciate your efforts on working through those issues. I guess I have two overall, big-picture comments. One is just, I am concerned about the reconfiguration of the intersection by eliminating one of the lanes on Ivory Street that would go straight to the marketplace. We have a lot of businesses, healthcare facilities, box stores, we have a potential opening date for Amazon Fresh, and this is going to restrict traffic being able to go into that marketplace. So I don't know if you have any ability to comment on or assure us that there will not be detriment to the marketplace users, both the ownership and the visitors in this, is I don't, I didn't see that specifically addressed in the report, so if there is ability to comment on that.
Yeah, I think, I think Mr. Lucas is probably familiar with that in terms of the numbers and so forth, but the vehicle trips in our study, to the best of my recollection, showed the volume coming up Ivory Street, making the right-hand turn, particularly, I think, in the morning, and that the vehicle trips that were associated with just proceeding straight through from Ivory North onto Grossman did not warrant a dedicated lane, and same with the left, left turn. So, it was found that, you know, those vehicle trips and the times of day and so forth would, that the combined lane would be sufficient.
Was, does that take into consideration just the future build-out? I don't know if, I mean, if you're using existing traffic counts, that wouldn't take into consideration potentially online Amazon Marketplace or potential other stores?
Oh, they did consider, that's, that's, that's one of the, you know, one of the issues that our traffic, that VAI and Sean Kelly have flagged, is the fact that, you know, now there were newspaper articles that Amazon Fresh isn't opening, or, you know, nobody knows what's happening, and those, those numbers were, to the best of my knowledge, those were included. And Amazon Fresh, when they appeared before this board, didn't have to do anything, right? They just, they just went in. So, you know, but we...
Okay, so that, that was, I don't remember the extent of conversation, they did come before us, but I don't remember the overall extent.
They did come before us, and they provided a traffic memorandum.
Right, they didn't have to do anything, though.
Okay. And then my secondary comment is along the lines of just how do we make this, even though it's a car-centric use with changes to car infrastructure, improvements to car infrastructure, how do we still prioritize and protect a pedestrian? And I think, you know, walking on some of the main thoroughfares in Braintree, walking right next to the curb is very not fun. Like, I, if I was a user to this site, I would want to enter the site immediately at that corner. I would not want to walk along Ivory or Union Street all the way down Chick-fil-A and then cross that, that would be too dangerous, especially with children, or is there an opportunity to better look at pedestrians from that intersection directly into the site? And, and make it protected, safe in the site. I think we still have the second structure along Union Street, but I think for pedestrian safety and comfortness of coming into the site, it would be good to have, how pedestrians at that corner could come into the site at that corner. So, if something to look at.
Yes, we can, right, so, we can look at that. I don't, I don't, I don't think there's a grade problem, it's maybe a safety issue about having a path, a pathway down in...
I think people will probably make their own pathway if you do not, but maybe to consider it now would be thinking about the actual use. Those were really my two major comments, you know, as we wait for the additional information. I don't have anything further, and, oh, Member Connolly, go ahead.
Had a question about the turning radius, if you're coming from the rotary to come to the restaurant site, has that been considered as far as, like, moving that back at all, or, I just wonder the turning radius, especially if people aren't familiar with that, if they're gonna be able to accomplish that turn?
And, and again, I'm sorry that Sean Kelly is ill tonight, but our, I think it, the geometry of it only had to do with pulling back that island there, that, the one, when you make the U-turn, if it's pulled back, there'll be more than enough room. So, I guess the question is, the, the long length on Union, is there any merit to trimming that? That portion?
We can certainly look at it.
Yeah.
I've made the U-turn, it's not, it's not as difficult of a U-turn as you might think it is, unless you've got cars on the road. There's actually quite a bit of width, you know, there's three lanes wide there on the, on the, what's that, the eastbound side?
No, I think that's, I, I did it as well, and is, you know, you can do it right now without too much of a trouble, so it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be better.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Connolly. Does any, anybody, any board members have any other comments? All right, so it looks like we would be looking to continue this to the Mar, was it the March meet, the March meeting? That was the 14th? Oh, yep.
What is the timetable on the revised TIA? Because we, the memo was issued in December, we haven't seen anything to date, and we need to make sure that our peer review consultant has sufficient time. There's massive concerns from the town engineering office, as well as our office. We've been looking at this for a while, and we have some serious concerns about the U-turn. I disagree completely with Torrington's opinion. Connor and I have been going out there and making that U-turn, and I would, you know, if there is such thing as a U-turn expert, I might qualify myself as one, growing up in much denser urban areas and making U-turns quite a bit, and, you know, you could go out there right now and make it, of course, but during the peak periods, the volumes in that area are very, very high, and that is something that, that creates a big concern, that you cannot get into the site without doing that, or if you're not brave enough to make the U-turn, you're going to be going up, and you're going to be going to the next intersection, or you're going to be routing around in some other sort of configuration of pattern, going up to Washington Street, making your way through the square, whatever it might be, going into marketplace to get in here. So that's something that is a, is a fairly large concern, and we voiced that multiple times. I wasn't here when the hearing started, but the fact that the traffic engineer wasn't here tonight to really present that, that this is the, the meat of this, of this proposal, I'm sorry to hear that he's sick, but somebody else could have came and at least been able to provide some. I get very concerned when non-traffic professionals are presenting that type of information. So, hopefully they're available next time, and if they cannot get the revised study in, I will default to consultant Greg Lucas. I would anticipate he will need at least two weeks to, to turn that around, so that needs to be submitted in accordance with our schedule. So if the materials can be submitted by the end of the month, then we can do something for March, if not, we would be looking at April.
That's not a problem.
April?
No, I mean, March, it's ready.
Or March, is that right?
It's, Sean Kelly has it ready to go to Mr. Lucas, and so I don't think submitting it to the department for Mr. Lucas's review by the end of the month is gonna be an issue at all.
Okay. And the peer reviewer can accommodate that for the, that would be the March 14 meeting. So we'd be looking to continue this to 7:15 on March 14.
Correct, yes.
Do we have a motion to continue?
A motion to continue to March 14 at 7:15.
Motion by Member Crowell, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, we'll see you in March. Thank you. We have another, the last item on our agenda is 8 to 10 and 40 Arnold Street, Planning Board File 20-02. I actually am going to be recusing myself from this item this evening, and Member Crowell will be acting as chair, which I believe, Member Connolly, you will be acting as a full member, voting member this evening on this application.
All right, so we will move on to the next item on our public hearing list, which is Planning Board File 20-02 for 8, 10, and 40 Arnold Street. If I could ask staff when they're ready to read in the legal notice?
Do you have the final notice?
Yeah, I'm coming. Trying to clean up as we go.
Our notice is given by the Planning Board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9, 11, and the Braintree zoning ordinance, Chapter 135, Article 6. Oh, wait a minute, that's a big typo. 135, I'm sorry, Articles 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 14. That a public hearing will be conducted on Wednesday, February 15, 2023, at 7:15 p.m. in the Braintree Town Hall. The Planning Board will consider a major modification of site plan review and special permit decision 20-02, and a use permit for factory outlet store from the applicant, TLC Inc., in lieu of the approved 49,000 square foot contractor use building. The applicant is proposing to construct two buildings, one 4,800 square feet, one 10,800 square feet, to be used in support of the TLC Hardscape and Masonry Supply business, manufacturing, storage, warehouse, support sales, support office and sales. The project also includes floodplain, environmental, stormwater, lighting, parking, landscaping, paving, and utility improvements. The site is 16.12 acres, has an address of 8 to 10 and 40 Arnold Street, is owned commercial and is identified and assessed as Plan 2008, is plots 4, 4A, 6, 3B, and Plan 3014, is plots 1C and 1D, and Plan 3013 is plot 58.
Thank you. And so we'll follow the format of the earlier hearings also, and hear from the applicant first, and then the public, staff, and then members of the board. If I could ask the applicant to present the special permit modification on our agenda?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, Frank Marinelli, for the applicant TLC Supply, Inc., and with me is Don Ross. Don is the founder and the owner of TLC Supply, and also his daughter here, Rolanda Ross Lee is here, and Rolanda is the general manager of TLC Supply. TLC Supply was established in 2000. They built a great reputation of service and quality. They have Hardscape and Masonry Supplies, and for over 20 years have been providing all of that high-quality product to homeowners and contractors. So that is the basis of the operation. I mean, maybe you've seen them as their sponsor of the Red Sox. We sometimes see them on cable TV, Don and his employees and what they do in terms of helping homeowners and contractors. They wholesale, and they also do some manufacturing of some product. So the property is the 16-plus acres that was approved by 20-02, and the property is owned by Adams Enterprises. And we have come to an agreement, TLC Supply and its land entity, Arnold Properties, which we formed to acquire the property. We are buying, TLC is buying about 3.24 acres of the site that the board previously approved. The piece of property that we're buying is in the south-westerly corner of the 16-acre site. Chi Man is from Hardy and Mann, and he's the civil engineer. So, Chi, if you can just show, that's the 3.24 acres that we're buying, that TLC is buying. The site, the 16-acre site goes back more in an easterly direction. There's a match line there. I don't know if you have the rest of the site, but it's pretty extensive. So that's a better view of the whole thing.
And then the portion of this site is the foundation.
Yeah, so the south-westerly corner is the portion that we've done a purchase agreement to buy the 3.2 acres and be able to relocate TLC Supply from Vernon Street in Quincy to this site. Now, this site was previously approved for a pretty substantial development program, a 139,000-square-foot building in the back, which is still going to remain Adam Street Enterprises' property. A 49,000-square-foot approximate building in a U-shape that was on this south-westerly corner is going to go away. And so the diminution of building mass is going to be substantial. We will have a 10,800-square-foot warehouse for TLC, and we'll have a 4,800-square-foot office and showroom. So the total building program for TLC is 15,600, about 35% of what the board already approved back in 20-02. So it's a much less intense development in terms of what we're building, and it's a, instead of a spec user, it's a long-established reputable company that is going to relocate here. And they'll have some outdoor storage of palletized materials, which will be kept neat and orderly and clean. We've met with the planning director yesterday, and we discussed all of that. We discussed the fact that Adam Street Enterprises will be modifying their permit, and we will, TLC will be issued a separate permit for the 3.24 acres if all goes as intended. Naturally, the traffic is much better in terms of the vehicle trips. I think that we have a traffic memorandum that's been filed by VAI, and it shows a significant reduction compared to the 49,000 square feet of development that was approved for this south-westerly corner, now going to 15,800 square feet total development. Chi, is there anything that you wanted to point out, or?
And I think-
We have, if we go with the, when we met with the planning director yesterday, if we don't, if we go with the original approved drainage, then we won't need a peer review, but otherwise we would need a peer review. Is that accurate?
That's correct. I think Mr. Hardy, who's Chi's partner, reached out to the engineering and stormwater division today. We actually had a meeting with them on something else and referenced this, and as far as the coverages and things, I think that's achievable. The difference is going to be the water quality, because there's far less roof here and a lot more pavement. So I think there's still going to need to be some modifications to that. I'm not quite confident that the water quality can be achieved with, given the amount of pavement versus roof in this proposal versus the previous proposal. So that he's, I think he's looking to meet with them this week to try to get a little more information from engineering and stormwater. They requested the peer review.
Okay, thank you. Is there any members of the public who would like to get up and speak on this?
My name's Gavin Williams, still 12 Arlington Street in Weymouth, in this case at 39 Adams Street in Braintree, right next door. So we watch and look at the property every day next door to us, where Williams Coal and Oil, right next to Graziano, for years. My father's Brian Williams, been in the town for a long time. And just our two primary concerns as it relates to management of the land there is when there is rain, it's a problem in that area. So having proper drainage and stormwater drains and that sort of thing, it's an issue. And it's a floodplain, and it doesn't drain that well historically, so. And then the other issue was Arnold Street. We have a little access to it that we'd like to keep and work together with whoever's occupying that area. And we've talked to George of Adams Enterprises in the past, and have a good relationship with him, and would look to have a good relationship with the next occupier of that area. And what was I getting at? The end of Arnold Street, it just sort of like goes into nothingness. If that could, you know, be cleaned up with some sort of simple curves, just sort of, some sort of definition at the end there, I think it would just make the whole property in general a lot more presentable. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this application? Okay, I'll turn it to staff.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So I did write a staff report. As the board knows, we spent a great deal of time working through the permitting on the previous proposal. I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Ross and his daughter on a couple occasions to go over sort of what their intent here is and what they want to do. Then the application was filed, and most of the comments are just about making sure that what we discussed and Mr. Ross's intentions are actually on the plan and in the materials that are submitted, because that's what's going to translate into the conditions, and that's what's going to be the record materials going forward. So we did meet yesterday. There is some work that still needs to be done, and that's all reflected in the staff report. We talked about the drainage, we talked about the traffic. Both of those things need revision and additional information to be submitted, which I don't think is really going to be an issue, but nonetheless, we need to take a look at that. And then basically, just again, like I said, providing additional information is, as you can see, looking through the report, some materials were not provided, and then the ones that were just need to be clarified a little bit further. In Frank's testimony, he is correct that we're going from 48,000 plus or minus square feet of building down to about 15, but the major difference between what was permitted before and what's being proposed now is, when this project was permitted, there was a condition put on it that no outdoor storage was permitted. And a large, large component of Mr. Ross's business is outdoor storage, and I expressed yesterday that we need a lot of information about that, quantified, what types of materials, exactly how they're going to be stored, and that area is going to be very defined on the site plan and also on the site. So I'm hopeful that those materials are forthcoming. He already had supplied me with some information from comments in the staff report yesterday. So just looking forward to receiving those revised materials and then going through the decision and, you know, creating, we've been talking about how to do this if we have the original decision from George, which that needs a little bit of modification as well. We talked about that yesterday. And then having a secondary decision for Mr. Ross, which also includes the special permit for the factory use. We're now going to have two separate owners, and how do we really make sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing, and the responsibilities are split between those entities? And then also, Kelly Phelan, our conservation agent, came into the meeting as well, because there was a lot of sequencing and cleanup and sort of work that needs to be done to even get to a point where you can create something that you can then actually start to go vertical on. So that is, we've asked them to give us that revised sequencing plan and tell us how this is all going to come together, because the reality is, is that Mr. Lang, the original developer of Riverside Business Park, has quite a bit of work to do in order for Mr. Ross to get in there and do what he wants to do. So those are really the outstanding items. I think if those come together, there shouldn't be a reason why we can't start working on the draft conditions. And we'll see what happens with the drainage. Like I said, Mr. Hardy, who's Chi's partner, reached out to engineering to set that meeting up. They might even be meeting tomorrow or Friday. It's a matter of just balancing that, making sure those reaches and those design points and those outfalls along the road. I'm looking at you, Madam Chair, because I can't remember if you were on CONCOM when this happened, or if you were on the planning board, but nonetheless, understand sort of those things that we dealt with. Actually, I remember the site visit now when you were on CONCOM. So we just want to make sure all of that year's worth of activity and permitting is upheld, and any modifications, maintain those baseline floodplain, storage, and also the stormwater management calculations as well.
From our perspective, we just want to thank the planning director and the assistant planning director for their time that they've spent on this, because as Ms. Santucci Rossi just said, it's a little bit different than what usually comes before the board, but we think that it's a better project. And Mr. Lang does have work to do in kind of the common area where he got an EPA remediation plan approval, and so there's got to be some grading and some moving of material, and then the drainage and the pavement done. So, and I think that what the planning director determined in terms of the way of doing it, like 20-02 and 20-02A, is a great suggestion, so that TLC will have its own decision and be able to get financed and move forward to a conveyance. And an A&R plan will be back here to have, hopefully, the board sign, and that Adam Street Enterprises will have the continuing responsibilities with respect to the rest of the property, and the same would be applicable with the Conservation Commission.
Thank you. I'll ask the members for comments. Member McCamey?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to say to Mr. Williams, I played on Williams Coal and Oil Major League back in the day, so, probably before you were born, but, so, thank you, Dad. Okay. Sounds like the staff has, is getting all the special permits organized. Okay, so that's, I'm glad we don't have to talk to that. And I'm sorry, Mr. Marinelli, they're relocating from where?
Vernon Street in Quincy.
Okay.
They're on a property that is just gravel, and it's, Don can speak to it, but it's been approved for a housing development in Quincy, apparently. We don't know how fast that's moving, but we'd like to keep moving on this as soon as possible, so.
So will this be a bigger space for your operations than you have in Quincy?
Yeah.
Good evening. What we have right now, we have two parcels of land, one acre on each side of Vernon Street, which is a dead-end street. So one of the parcels was part, we rented from Monte Granite, and they sold it for development. So we only have that other one-acre piece left and isn't big enough for us. So that's why we're looking to move to this site, the three acres.
Got it. So it is bigger overall? Okay, and while you're up here, sir, if I could ask you, could you explain to us what you're fabricating, what you're storing, what's going on, and what's going to happen in your buildings here?
Okay, the, yeah. The first area there is the maintenance, because we have delivery trucks and forklifts and all that, so we take care of our own maintenance. The next section is the rack room, which is racks like in Home Depot, we can put small boxes up in there from the forklift. So that's what goes on in there. The next one is the fabrication. We rock face stone, cut stone, like granite stair treads, we do engraving, compass roses. We wet cast concrete lentils for over doorways, splash blocks for downspouts, so that's what we do in there. And then the last one was the palletized storage or the cement storage, and that's just pallets of cement and concrete and things like that.
Okay. And these are all acceptable uses?
Yes and no.
Okay, fine, thank you, thank you very much. And I know we brought up the fact that we didn't want to have any outside material. As you can imagine, you know, this used to be cement plant- As you can imagine, you know, this used to be cement plant, you know, have all, I'm sure you know. And so, the residents were probably relieved when it got shut down and now, you know, you're going to have open aggregates, if you will. So, just, you know, we have to be sensitive to that.
It's no reflection of what that ever looked like.
Yeah, no, 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 I understand, yeah.
We're OCD, you know? Everything is organized and neat and straight and you look at our delivery trucks and everything we have. I have some packets right here I'd like to give to you that you can look, tells a little bit about our history and everything we do and all the employees that we have, you know, little bit of what they do and you get to know us, you know?
Yeah, thank you.
The outside storage is, you know, palletized, square, wrapped, pavers, wall block, things like that. It's not piles of things. It's all material that's used outside.
Yeah, no, no, I, I hear you.
Store it outside.
So, I wanted to ask you, thanks Frank, will there be outside trucks coming in or do you only have your own vehicles?
It'll be outside delivery trucks.
Outside delivery and they'll be taking away as well? They'll be moving product?
Well, there'll be customers that come in, you know, to pick up product. Then we have vendors from out of state like bricks from Pennsylvania, let's say, and they'll come in and we don't have any come in off hours, nobody stays there, you know, parks and like that. And that's why if you look at the plan, if you have the most current plan, shows a truck lane that, you know, we can't tell when they come in and we may have two of those type of deliveries today, a day, or we could have eight.
Got it.
And some might show up three, four at a time. Well, we can take one in the yard or two in the yard and if a couple more show up, we got a space out there that I think will fit four tractor trailers. And it's another lane, so it won't affect the flow of traffic into Riverside, won't go out and block Mr. Williams from getting into his yard and all the neighborhood. So, I saw that just from experience of what we have now because we're on a dead-end street. So, I've already experienced it and I wanted to eliminate that problem.
Right, right. And so, we're going to have tractor trailer trucks coming in and out as well? Okay.
Yeah.
And I know the director just left, but the assistant director may know. Are they allowed to store their trucks on the property?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
If I may, Member McCamey and through the chair, they are, they're going to have to show on their site plan. I wasn't privy to the meeting that happened just yesterday, but that is something that they have to demonstrate.
Our parking? Yeah, yeah, I worked on that today. I'm going to meet with Sean Hardy tomorrow morning and we're going to lay that out and some of the other concerns that you had.
Awesome.
Okay. Open space, I mean, did they meet the requirement for that? How does that work?
They do, Member McCamey. There's a, so what we've asked them to do is we had the seven lots there now, they were all going to be combined into one and we had a zoning analysis that was completed for the Riverside Business Park. Now that we're breaking it up into two lots, we've asked that analysis to be run for each of those parcels and I'm, they've already run it for Mr. Ross's parcel and the coverage, Frank's looking at it now, if he wants to just say the number. It's up there, but it complies. I think it's just under the, I think it's at 74 and you can go up to 75.
Open space is 26.1.
Okay.
So, it's, it complies. We, as the planning director said, we did do the zoning calcs for this standalone lot. And Sean Hardy, to the director's request yesterday, has the calcs for the remainder of the property and Sean Hardy said that it's not, no problem at all, all that. He's going to put that on the plan.
Okay, sure, that's, the staff would make you do it anyway, so, yeah. I think that's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Member Kent, any questions?
So, the number of trips or the overall traffic in this configuration would be less than what was anticipated in the prior design?
Yeah, we had the traffic study done on it and we were probably about half of what was.
Okay, that's all I have.
The palletized cement, is none of that that's going to be on the ground?
Inside, all inside the warehouse.
Right, but it'll all be on racks or?
Oh.
There was some comment about water being a problem down in this area of the site.
Yeah, the palletized material that's stored outside is cast concrete. It's hard, it's not powdered. The powdered goes inside the warehouse because that's.
Yeah, but inside the warehouse, I want to make sure that nothing was on the ground. And if anything was on the ground, was there any sort of retention or anything was needed around the container?
Just to clarify, this portion of the site is, on the finished product, will be three if not, and Chi, if you could help me, how many feet above the floodplain are we here? Is it three?
The first zone is at elevations 46.
Yeah, and they're at 49.
The gray at the warehouse building around, above 49. So, we are way above the first zone.
Okay, thank you.
Just an answer to, to just quantify the traffic question for Mr. Kent. On page four of VAI's memo, it says, "In comparison to the trips that were associated with the portion of the Riverside Business Park that will be tenanted by TLC, the project is expected to generate 218 fewer trips on an average weekday, a 45% reduction with 44 fewer trips expected during the weekday morning peak, a 53% reduction and 93 fewer trips expected during the weekday evening peak hour, 95% reduction." So, that's significant in terms of, you know, just the square footage we were talking about earlier being at 49,000 and this operation at 15.6.
If I can also make comments about that is that our original calculations on the parking ratio is based on retail and warehouse, which we have 35 parking, but after consultation with the director, this is going to be classified as, what's it?
Factory outlet.
Factory outlet, which we only need 16 parking. And I think there is eight employees and usually there's, on the Quincy site, what they have is usually seven, eight customer at a time, so that's, even 16 parking will be sufficient for the operations. And some of those parking will be reconfigured for like, you know, the onsite truck parking and so forth and probably a slight increase on the open space as well.
Thank you. Member Conley?
Yes, thank you. Could you discuss from the operation summary, more so at the beginning of the day, any noise that might be associated with your operations?
The noise?
The noise in the early morning hours?
Right now, we're in a residential area. One of our, the lot that we own, there's a house right in the notch in our land and they're all around us and we haven't had a single complaint in 22 years. You know, we shut off the backup alarms on the forklifts early in the morning and they're quiet. We haven't had a complaint.
The backup alarms was a concern, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have early morning trucks in there. The vendor trucks come in, the trailers at 6:00 AM and our forklifts out there unload them and it doesn't bother anybody.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. And I have been to the Quincy site more than a handful of times for a lot of my paving stone and granite and it is, it is a very well-organized site, so I.
Well, you must probably, you know, rely on it then.
Yeah, it's been a few years, but it's been a while and it is a well-organized site. I do, some of the questions that staff had raised were the same ones that I had, the compensatory storage was a big item of discussion when this project came through Conservation Commission, so making sure, to Williams' point, that the drainage is not negatively affected by this change, that everything maintains the proper balance that was reached during conservation. And with respect to the traffic, understanding the trucks versus cars' traffic impact with respect to the reduction in actual traffic counts. And that's really all that I had also. So, there's no, do you have anything else, Attorney Mayor?
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It's been a late night for the board, so thank you for hearing us.
Yes, spacing out here, so we could accept a motion to, well, any motion. I assume we're looking to continue while we receive the additional information that was requested by staff.
Close the hearing?
Motion to continue.
Motion to close?
Continue.
Yeah.
To continue.
To continue, fine, that's good. So, yeah, I would make that motion to continue.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Since what date, Melissa?
March 14.
Okay, yeah, that, if you think that's going to be work for your end, that's fine with us.
Yeah, as long as we have everything within the deadline, which is, oh, excuse me, February 27th. So, it's like two weeks, right, two weeks? Yeah.
Okay. So, we had a motion to continue to March 14th and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Oh, and now we can have a motion to end the meeting tonight?
I would move to adjourn.
Adjourn, yes, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Your Honor, I should have let you do that.
How are we officially adjourned?
I think that we adjourned if we voted to adjourn. We didn't note the.
What happened?
One of the, we adjourned with one item left on the agenda.
I jumped the gun.
We can reopen the meeting.
We can reopen it, can make a motion to reopen it.
I don't think we voted.
We didn't vote on adjourning? Okay, so we're just all really tired and this will be super quick. The last item on our agenda this evening is a term limits discussion. We did get an email, staff and myself got an email just saying that as far as, I don't, I didn't bring a copy of the email with me, but basically the mayor's office had looked into it, we're fine to continue, they're going to continue to look into it. They were short-staffed in the last month to be able to produce something, so hopefully at the next meeting, we will have an official opinion on it, but we don't.
We're all in the meeting so we can have some discussion.
We, yeah, I hope, I hope we do have the memo, but I don't, I didn't have anything, so.
I'd like to have some discussion of this, for some of that's why I'm signing over the meeting.
Yeah, okay, we can follow up with that to see who will present the opinion to us at the next meeting, but we'll keep it on our agenda and have that for next meeting. So, with that, that is the end of our agenda, so motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Member Grove, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.